Seeing just before 6:30, I'd like to call to order the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School Committee for June 11, 2025. Before we do the roll call, I just want to mention that Chairman Blum will not be in attendance tonight. She had a death in the family, and it is my hope you can join me in keeping her and her family in your thoughts during a difficult time. Ms. Rodericks, could you call the roll?
Chair Steve Sylvia.
Present.
Bob Clark.
Here.
Courtney Brightman.
Here.
Carolina Hernandez.
Here.
Kristaline.
Here.
Melinda Richards.
Here.
Tim Emery.
Here.
Also present, we have Ms. Steele, Ms. Fleming, Mr. Higgins, and Dr. Barbara Starkey. Please join me in... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have anyone recording the meeting tonight? Seeing none, next item. Agenda item number four, we have public input. Prior to that, the full policy link is linked to each agenda. Speakers will be asked to introduce themselves, first and last name, to the chair, and then state their residence. Requests for public comment can also be mailed in advance to Chairman Jennifer Blum at freelake.org. And then when called by the chair, the speaker is invited to address the school committee for up to three minutes to present their material. Public comments shall be limited to items that are within the school committee's authority. Do we have anyone for public participation tonight? Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jill Root. I'm a teacher at Freetown Elementary School and a lifetime resident of Freetown, the East Freetown part of town for those who are interested. First of all, a shout out to our retirees. You're amazing educators. We thank you so much for your dedication and service, and I'm a little bit jealous. Enjoy life beyond our walls. Having said that, I am speaking tonight as a lifetime Freetown-Lakeville employee, student, started in the '70s, graduated from Upon Aquit Regional High School, go Lady Laker softball, came back and was a paraprofessional, Title I math paraprofessional is where I started my career at Freetown Elementary School, became a grade-level classroom teacher, moved different grade levels because I just enjoyed having different challenges, became the physical education teacher at Freetown Elementary School, and have been there for 16 years. I also have the role of being a parent of two beautiful children who went through the school district, one who graduated from Upon Aquit and one who went to O'Colony, and received an incredible education and lifelong friends and memories. Forty years of my life have been inside of these walls, which seems incredible until you hear some of the stories from some of my colleagues who have been here longer. I've seen many things happen. I've seen promises made, promises kept, promises hoping to be kept, and I've seen promises broken. I'm here to talk about Freetown Elementary School because, as my principal has told me, I bleed Freetown Elementary School blue. I love my students. I love my job. I love my colleagues and all we stand for, to educate your children. We are all here because we love what we do. I've seen so many things over the years. I've seen 33 students in a classroom, three grade-level classrooms per grade. I have seen people lose their jobs that I've had to talk to and help them through as a union representative in the past. Nobody wants cuts. I deeply believe that. I don't think anyone would be here if we did. But it's easy and more palatable to talk about, first to start with, the seven positions that we're losing as retirees and non-renewals. But what does that really mean for us? That means that Freetown Elementary School alone, we are losing two and a half positions before we talk about the $250,000 we've asked from E&amp;D. We're talking about two grade-level teachers. We're talking about, with permission, I'm talking about Suzanne Cunha, who is our amazing math interventionist at Freetown Elementary School, who before she started, we were at 67% green, meaning above grade level, has brought our program and our children up to 79% in the green, 1% in the red. She is now, because of retirement, being asked to be part-time at Freetown Elementary School, part-time at Assawamse. She services 38 children a day, and she will not be able to see our most at-risk students at kindergarten and first grade, where studies and data shows that that's where you need to reach these children before they fall flat on their faces. She is your safety net for math. The position's not being replaced at Assawamse. We have to share her now. I'm kind of a jealous person. I don't want to share our people. And I'm sure Assawamse would like to have their own as well. That's from the seven. We also lose those two others. So just from the seven that we start with, before we talk about any other funding, we lose two and a half people out of my elementary school. People who work hard, one of whom keeps our students, math students who are at risk, at grade level or above. Then we talk about the $250,000, which will save four positions in our district, one again, which is at Freetown Elementary School. It's easy not to put a name to these people because it makes it easier to say. Her name is Meggy McKehey. She is an OG, Ordon Gillingham Certified Teacher, brought in as a specialist to help our most at-risk literacy students. She sees between Freetown Elementary School and Assawamse Elementary School, she sees 20 students, 13 at Freetown Elementary School. These are the most at-risk students we have for literature, for reading, that if they don't get this now, they will fall in the future. They will fall further behind at grades, further behind at the Freetown-Lakeville Middle School and at the high school. We get them now. We help them. I've seen, in my years, the amount of help that these interventionists have given. They have kept our kids from failing. It's not about positions. It's about teachers. It's about the students that we serve and helping them be the best that they can be. I've seen us go so far forward, helping our students. Please don't take us backwards. If you can reconsider that $250,000 will save not just our four positions of teachers, it'll save 20 to 30 students who are not able to receive the services that some of us have had. My children had services. I had services. Please reconsider. Thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for the comments. Just as the chair, I'm in the awkward position. If you could just be mindful, although everything is important, of the three minutes moving forward. Anyone else for the public participation tonight? Sure. Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Haven Richardi. I'm a 10th-grade student at Upon Aquit from East Freetown, Massachusetts. I'm here to ask you to please reconsider or to revise the FY '26 budget. As a result of cutting the budget, Mr. Cormac Smith could lose his job, but he has done so much more for the school in such little time. He has made such a big impact on the school in just his first year of teaching, and not only as a teacher. He also volunteered all his extra time and became the girls JV lacrosse coach, which he has never done before. The players have seen him spending his extra time learning the game and did a great job passing on his knowledge. He also had to figure out how to sub 26 girls in one game. He didn't just stop coaching when the JV season ended, but continued by coming to the varsity practices and every playoff game until the season came to an end. Mr. Smith showed his support at every game up to the tournament and even drove all the way to midfield to show his support for the team in our final playoff game. This shows just how dedicated he is to his job and at the school. Mr. Smith is not only a good teacher, but a good coach, and deserves to keep his job after everything he's done for the school. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Anyone else for public?
Hi, my name is Michael Plino. I'm a teacher and coach here at Upon Aquit, as well as an advisor. I served as a silent rep during bargaining for the contract that we recently ratified, and during those sessions, I distinctly remember a representative on the district side stating that we could not increase the percentage for paraprofessionals because the district was already agreeing to using E&amp;D funds to ensure positions were not going to be cut. Those funds were expected to keep us at near-level funding. I voted in favor of that one-year contract because I was under the impression that my coworkers were safe. And now, the E&amp;D funds are not being approved, and my coworkers are losing their jobs. So I'm just confused as to how that happens when there was an understanding from those sessions that the necessary budget was going to be approved by this committee. I am seeking clarification here and urging the committee to reconsider its position on the use of E&amp;D funds.
My name is Laura Barnicot. I'm from Bridgewater, Massachusetts. I am the Social Studies Curriculum Leader, and we are here to represent our department tonight as one of the cuts at the high school is in our department, bringing us to a department of seven. As you may know, the state implemented a civic action project requirement for all high school students in 2018. Dan Rutledge and I, in consultation with our whole department, have created a comprehensive, year-long civics project, which the Executive Office of Education for Massachusetts has just recently deemed exemplary. They went so far as to say that our students showed authentic and meaningful learning, something that is harder and harder to do in the current AI climate. To cut a member of our department could mean risking our ability to help students have this meaningful civics experience, in which they get to authentically engage with their community and try to make a difference. Cuts to our department could put our civic action project at risk. As with one less member, we would be asking members of our department to carry more on our plates, which could take away from our civics program and its exemplary status. Today, I encourage you to take a look at the projects that are around this library and see the value that some of our students have been able to put towards this community. It's a really important program, and we are concerned about how it's going to continue at the level that it's continuing at. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to continue on that, since we're talking as a department, specifically, these cuts will affect elective options. For the last three years, I've been working on a Model UN class. Some of us who were here in November might recall proving a trip that we did to New York. We took the kids from Upon Aquit to Providence on train. We went to New York. We went to the United Nations. We went to Times Square. You know, these kind of things are authentic learning experiences, and by slashing our department, you take away these opportunities for the kids. Not to mention the timing. The timing of this is really tough because the kids have already signed up for classes. So now it's on us to explain to the kids why they won't be able to take the classes that they signed up for. So these cuts will have an effect on the kids. They're opportunities, and, you know, your decisions do impact us as well. And we have to take responsibility as being the messengers when it comes to some of these cuts.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Girolando, also a member of the Social Studies Department, and I have the honor of teaching AP Psychology just down the hall. In honor, I am forever grateful that Dr. Starkey offered me 10 years ago. I just want to take a few moments to emphasize a message delivered by several members of our graduating class, who I actually see in attendance here this evening, at this very podium just a month ago. A message we also heard as a highlight of the student speeches delivered during graduation. The message is that the academic opportunities at Upon Aquit provide students an experience unlike almost any of the neighboring schools. There is only one school in the South Coast Conference that administered more advanced placement exams last year, Somerset Berkley, 109 more to be exact. That is with over 250 more students and AP courses offered all the way down to freshman year. We at Upon Aquit just this year began offering AP courses to sophomores, with AP seminar offered now by the Social Studies Department. Although we may not be facing the immediate loss of an AP course, an assurance I'm sure that will be given, a teacher lost across virtually every department will create a barrier to expand our outstanding AP program. For instance, the professional conversations within the Social Studies Department about maybe one day adding AP Government or AP Human Geography, they end. I know the scheduling impacts one less social studies teacher will have in our department, and I am fearful of what that future holds for our school's AP program. Our building may not be the newest or shiniest in the area, a problem further worsened when the new Bristol-Plymouth Regional Tech opens. However, I circle back to the messages of our new graduates. The educational opportunities at Upon Aquit are second to none in this area. I would put those up against anyone when trying to persuade a student to join Laker Nation. And continuing to have the space and flexibility to build enrollment in our current AP offerings while also maintaining the potential for new AP offerings is paramount to sustaining our undeniable academic appeal. The vote on May 7 to fund four positions for just a year, later realized to have failed, may have seemed like a one-year Band-Aid, but in the face of growing opportunities for possible incoming freshmen outside of these walls, continuing to bolster our academic appeal is critical.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joe Solomon. I'm the Union VP, and I'm a history teacher as well. As you can see, our department and this district stands to lose a lot by the elimination of these positions. Give us a year to show you that we are, in fact, growing as a department, and that we truly do need every single position we currently have. Use E&amp;D for a one-time emergency use responsibly, and then we will prove to you that we need it and that it is not a mistake. Instead of building our civics project further, there will be a chance that it is reduced. Instead of having some of the best AP enrollment in our area, this will instead stunt our AP growth, just as we are opening the AP doors to sophomores. Instead of having some of the most unique and college-ready electives in the state, we will be in a place where we can no longer offer new and creative electives, like leadership, Model UN, atomic bomb, to list a few. We are urging you to take a revo on the use of E&amp;D, so we can work together to find different ways to meet the needs of our students instead of taking away their academic opportunities. Thank
Anyone else for public participation?
So, hello, everyone. My name is Lucas Soares. I was third in the graduating class. I am gathered here tonight along with the other members of the Upon Aquit graduating class of 2025, top 10, at least those of them who are able to make it tonight, in order to formally state our discontent with the current school committee's approval of the current year's budget. I can personally state that throughout my following of this budgetary process, I have experienced a roller coaster of emotions. The confusion and unhappiness at initially hearing teachers were getting cut was relieved at first by hearing that something was passed to prevent this from happening. All of this, only to hear that this bill would not be passed at the very same meeting where we gave speeches about the impact our teachers had upon us during our time in this district. This very same meeting where we were honored by the committee for our academic achievement with some celebratory pens that we have before you today. I know I speak not only for myself and the peers you see before you right now, but fellow students all throughout Upon Aquit and the district when I say this. We do not want teachers to get fired. When we came here before you at the last school committee meeting just a few weeks ago, we spoke about our experiences at Upon Aquit and in the Freetown-Lakeville District at large. A common theme that arose time and time again was the powerful impact that teachers have had upon us. Our teachers have inspired us to pursue our academic interests that will guide us as we, the graduates before you, continue our intellectual pursuits and our careers. Our teachers have motivated us as coaches, directors, and mentors, and have exposed us to new passions and helped us achieve things that we didn't think possible. Our teachers have worked hard to shape us into the adults, the citizens, that stand before you today. Most importantly, our teachers have showed us to stand up for what we believe is right, and we believe that this is wrong. At a time when support of education is more needed than ever, as a community, we need unity and strength, not dissolution. We stand before you now as former students and graduates, yes, but foremost as citizens who believe in doing what's right, as citizens who have been shaped in large part by the teachers, some of whom will be no longer returning next year. School committee, we urge you to do what is right and make the move to support education and continue to build up students, such as those who stand before you tonight, by reconsidering the fiscal year 2026 budget. Until that happens, we cannot accept the gift that recognizes our achievement while simultaneously knowing action is being taken to reduce the potential of future students to achieve.
Thank you. Any other members of the community for public participation? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda item number five, reports and presentations. First off is the chairperson's report through Jennifer Blum. I just want to take an opportunity to congratulate the class of 2025 on both a level as a school committee member, but also as a parent of a recent graduate. I thought the student speakers were outstanding and obviously continue to be outstanding. I just want to say that the tradition of teachers and paraprofessionals and members of the community handing off the diplomas is certainly a proud tradition and a proud night, and I thought Ms. Desert did an amazing job with her remarks around Nurse Bullock and a message of positivity and kindness. I thought it was a proud night for the district, a proud night to be a father, but congratulations to our class of 2025. Item number B, student representative report.
So we don't have our student representatives here tonight, but through the vice chair, I do have a report regarding graduation and some other events that have occurred. So we congratulate again to echo Vice Chair Sylvia's remarks. We congratulate our class of 2025, and we are so very proud of our 171 graduates. All of our recent graduates 100% met the Commonwealth of Massachusetts MassCor graduation requirements. We are incredibly excited for their futures. 62% are headed to four-year colleges. 15% are bound for two-year colleges. 1% are going to trade programs, and 1% will be joining the military, and 21 of our students will be joining the workforce. Compliments to our ARHS staff and to our families for ensuring that each and every student has a confirmed postgraduate plan. Thank you to everyone who participated in the class of 2025 commencement activity. There were 73 individuals who handed diplomas, to your point, Chair Sylvia. 70 were school pastor-present employees, three were town officials. Thank you as well to the FLRSD custodial and ground staff for preparing our campus for the ceremony and for remaining after the celebration to restore Griffith Field, and thank you publicly to Mrs. Desert and everyone at the high school who contributed to that wonderful affair. I'd also like to report tonight on spring athletics, or on the role of talking about successes at Upon Aquit. The Upon Aquit Boys and Girls Outdoor Track and Field Teams had a strong postseason showing, with boys qualifying for 28 events and placing second overall at the SCC League Meet, while the girls qualified for 20 events and placed eighth overall. A total of 18 Lakers earned top-eight finishes and medals at the League Meet, highlighting the depth and talent across both squads. At the MIAA Division IV Championship, the boys qualified for 15 events and the girls for five events. Thomas Smith led the Lakers at the state level, placing third in the 110-meter hurdles and second in the pentathlon. He went on to represent Upon Aquit at the MIAA Meet of Champions, where he finished second overall in the boys' pentathlon. Unified track and field competed for their state championship meet at Natick High School with Corinne Allerhead, fourth-place long jump, and Elizabeth Allerhead, first-place javelin, and Aurora McKenna, second-place shot put. Girls tennis also entered the MIAA Division III Tournament as the number 11 seed and advanced to the Round of 16, beating Tewksbury and falling to Newburyport. Boys' tennis entered the MIAD III Tournament as the number four seed and advanced to the Round 16 game, beating Hanover and losing to Boston Latin in Round Eight. Boys lacrosse entered the MIAD III Tournament as the number 22 seed and lost in the Round of 32 versus Shawshin Tech. I'm going to keep going because there's more. Girls lacrosse entered the MIAD III Tournament as the number eight seed, beating Tewksbury and Bishop Fenwick, advancing to Round Eight, losing to the number one seed, Medfield. Softball entered the MIAD III Tournament as the number three seed, beating Worcester Tech and Seacock, advancing to the Round Eight game, losing to Foxborough. And last but certainly not least, the boys' baseball team entered the MIAD III Tournament as the number 16 seed, beating Tectonic, and the number one seed, St. Mary's of Lynn, advancing to the Round of Eight, losing to North Reading. In summary, our Lakers had a very successful spring, with all teams participating in postseason play, five teams advancing to the Sweet 16 and three teams advancing to the Elite Eight. It was, to quote Mr. Cabusio, "a great time to be a Laker." I think we need a round of applause for our athletic performance. One final distinction, just as a highlight. I'd like to congratulate our campus programs, Storytelling and Once Upon a Generation participants. Under the tutelage of Karen Chase and Andrea Lovett, students' participants gave final performances at the Lakeville Library last night. They were unbelievable. Students' well-developed stories and flawless performances highlighted milestones in the lives of our sensational seniors in the community who participate, and they served to form a bridge between our youth and our senior citizens. Special thanks to Karen, Andrea, and to Diane Zapiga, Campus Programs Director. And I should shout out to Boston Paquette, who's here tonight, who gave a performance last night. So a round of applause, please, for that program.
Great. Moving on to your report, item C.
The first component of my report tonight is a presentation of our retirees. Without further ado, I'd like to call up Principal Pleno to please come to the podium.
Took the long way.
LeAnn Beckman, please join Principal Pleno's podium.
So the one that's on here is not my writing. Can I just grab it?
You sure can. You sure can. But while you're doing that, we're going to acknowledge LeAnn, who will be retiring after 23 years of service in the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District.
All right. So, LeAnn, where to even begin? This is going to be so hard. I'm glad you're the only one that came tonight because this is just emotional. You leaving Assawamse is going to be a tough one for me. Not only will I miss your organization, your type-A personality, your driven-and-get-it-done-right-the-first-time belief, but I will miss the work friendship that we have formed over the years. From Boss's Day and the beats that you leave me on my desk with a post-it stating that as a boss, I can't be beat. To the skirt you donated to my 11-year-old daughter Samantha because we realized it was a romper. I will never stop picturing you wearing the romper as a skirt and saying, "I just don't know what this extra material is." It's like this little skirt thing. Well, that's Well, that's the top of the romper, so my daughter now owns that. All the buffalo-flavored treats that you would always leave in the office for me, and then you were finally told I don't like buffalo or spicy. Never a dull moment, yet always balanced with professionalism, as you would lend a helping hand to anyone in need without a complaint or question. All I would have to say is, "LeAnn, get on the walkie. I need this done quick and right. I'm not ready to say goodbye just yet, and I get the pleasure of working with LeAnn through December when she does retire. Keep the laughs coming. Thank you for all the good time, support, help, treats, appreciation, and your true friendship. I'll be sure to save some vacation time for a few days off so we can golf. You are a rare find and absolutely irreplaceable."
Thank you. There's more. You have to live in your moment here. Kelly?
So your AES secretaries expressed the following to you. LeAnn, after 23 incredible years as a dedicated paraprofessional, it is hard to imagine the halls of Asawamset without you. Your kindness, patience, and genuine care have touched so many lives. The dedication and passion you show toward each and every student is admirable. I'm sure I speak for all staff when I say we will all miss your laminator knowledge, something I'm sure you won't miss one bit. As you step into retirement, we hope you get even more time for those golf swings, live music, and precious moments with your family. Thank you for everything you've done and for being such a wonderful part of Asawamset. You will be deeply missed. Wishing you the best on this new journey.
the FLRSD.
For 24 wonderful years, Mrs. Carrie Clark has been a cherished part of Asawamset Elementary School family. She holds a very special place in my heart, especially because she was my daughter's first grade teacher. I'm sorry. During the unforgettable time when schools were closed down for the COVID pandemic, it's hard to put into words just how much Carrie means to our AES family, but here goes. Carrie embodies everything we imagine when we think of the perfect elementary school teacher. Her voice, always gentle and melodic, drawing children in effortlessly, comforting, soothing, and full of warmth. Carrie didn't just teach, she joined her students in the magic of learning. She was one of them, right down on the floor, in the heart of every lesson. Her teacher was never just about books or tests, it was always about connection, imagination, transformation, and most importantly, love. She made learning fun, engaging, and deeply personal. Carrie, your calming presence and your radiant spirit will be missed more than words can ever express. Though you may no longer call Room 27 your own, you will forever be the superhero in the hearts of every child who is lucky enough to learn within those walls.
Your first-grade colleague expresses, Carrie, our first-grade team is so lucky to have worked beside you for all these years. You have made such an impact on the lives of so many children. Your dedication and commitment to providing the best education to your students was admirable. You resonate the true essence of a first-grade teacher with your patience, kindness, creativity, and compassion. You always were willing to extend a helping hand to us as colleagues through sharing ideas, offering advice, and lending a listening ear. We are so excited for you on this new adventure, but you will truly be missed in the first-grade hallway.
Doreen Doobee, who is not present tonight, is retiring after 38 years of service in the Freetown Lakeville Regional School Committee.
Okay, this is my last one. Phew. It's an emotional time of year, right? You go from like 100 to then zero in the summer, and all this, and kids leaving, so I apologize. It's emotional. Mrs. Doreen Doobee, 38 years. A beloved and irreplaceable member, again, of Asawamset Elementary School for an incredible 38 years. Again, yes, 38. From my first interaction with Doreen, she provided me with an understanding of what it truly means to go above and beyond. She was that teacher emailing over the summer, asking, "Can I get into the building?", eager to prepare for the year ahead. The one who checks in over holiday breaks just to see if she can come in, set out, plan, simply just be in her classroom. That is Doreen, dedicated, driven. To hear Doreen speak about math curriculum and then see her truly bring it to life for her students is like watching a child hit their very first homerun. It's pure joy, pride, and maybe even a little bit of magic. For Doreen, being an educator was never just a profession, it's who she is. It's in the way she connects, inspires, and lights that spark. As this new chapter of retirement begins, it's with both a joy and a touch of sadness. But Doreen, please remember, you will always be an educator. That passion, that heart, and that beautiful ability to inspire doesn't retire with you. It lives on in every student you've taught and every single colleague you've touched. Just like the wise words from Dr. Seuss to remind us, "Oh, the places you'll go, it's not the end, but a new beginning. Wherever life takes you next, know that Asawamset will always be your home. You are and always will be a part of our family, and you're always welcome."
Lisa Coodia shares, not only has Doreen been a staff member as AES at AES for 38 years, she has also been a longtime resident of Lakeville and graduate of Aponequit High School. Her knowledge of AES and Lakeville history is expansive, and she is the go-to person if you need information regarding people and places in Lakeville. Doreen's classroom is always an open door where you can have a conversation or ask a question. She openly shares her resources and her knowledge of curriculum. She thinks of the staff at AES as family. She is that teacher who always gets to school early in the morning and often stays late in the afternoon. When she took on her new role as math specialist, she willingly volunteered her time and materials to demonstrate collaborative math thinking. Doreen is going to be terribly, to be missed terribly as a colleague, but most importantly, as a friend.
Kim Beard, please come to the podium. Kim is retiring after 23 years of service as the ARHS Main Office Secretary to the Principal.
Kim Beard has been the heart of the main office for 23 years, welcoming students, families, and staff with warmth, grace, and unwavering professionalism. Her calm, steady support has helped keep our school running smoothly every single day, and we are scrambling to understand all the 10,000 things that only Kim knows. And Kim, I'm sorry, but I cannot promise that Joe Solomon won't still stalk you at home. We will miss her immensely, but we are so grateful for her years of commitment, and we wish you all the best in the world, well-earned next chapter with your son and your grandchildren.
Kim, Lisa Craig shares that for 16 years, she was fortunate to work with you. She says, "We shared 10 of those years working side by side as colleagues, but more importantly, as friends. Your presence and your wealth of knowledge will truly be missed." Woo-hoo, Kim! You finally got to retire, and I'm so happy for you. That's from Lisa. And I, Kim, want to thank you for being my confidant and my ever-steady source of support and tremendous kindness while I was the principal of Aponequit High School. Thank you, Kim. in the FLRSD.
Cindy Schiff was pretty new to us, but she consistently presented as a compassionate and joyous paraprofessional, who made an immeasurable impact on the lives of our students with special needs. She was patient, kind, and she had an unwavering commitment that brought comfort, joy, and growth to countless children and their families. We will miss her constant smile, and we are deeply grateful for her decade of service and wish her every happiness in her well-earned retirement.
Maria Moniz expresses, Cindy reluctantly but happily retired after a long history working within the school district. She was always loving and caring towards the students she worked with and had a warm personality. She always made personal connections with each student and had a positive impact in any team she worked with. She was cherished for her positive attitude and favorite sayings like, "You've got to just ride the wave," and "To be kind." She has left a lasting impact on both her colleagues and her students.
Lisa Shirtliff, who's not with us tonight, retired in September of this past year after 26 years of service in the FLRSD.
So after 26 dedicated years of service, we celebrate and honor Lisa Shirtliff for her career with our special needs students and providing invaluable assistance to our regular education classrooms. Lisa was always eager to help in any way that she could and was consistently involved directly with students on the playing field, the cafeteria, the classroom, meeting needs with kindness, patience, and joy, and always well-dressed. We wish her joy in her well-deserved retirement.
Fellow Paraprofessional Ursula Hart shares, Lisa retired after a long tenure at Aponequit. Her presence always filled the room with positive energy. She brought her energetic and flexible nature to servicing our students and their needs. She was diligent and worked well with her team. Lisa was a fierce advocate for her colleagues and her students. The impression left on the students she worked with for over 25 years, she will be fondly remembered long into the future. Joanne Quonoyer, who is not with us this evening, is retiring in two weeks after 21 years of service to the FLRSD.
Meg Robinson of the Central Office shares, trying to write a retirement tribute about someone you have worked with for 21 years is very emotional and nearly impossible to find the right words. Joanne is not only a coworker but a wonderful friend who will be missed to be seeing daily. Anyone who has worked with Joanne will agree that her work ethic is impeccable, always going above and beyond to keep things organized. Her daily support given to administrators, teachers, staff, and retirees is always accomplished with integrity and grace. Her patience and consideration of others is remarkable and often noted by the retirees she assists throughout the day. She has quietly done so much for so many over the years, I could never list them all. Her retirement is well-deserved. Joanne will be missed by the Central Office staff, the staff at each of the schools, and the many retirees that she works with daily. We wish her a very happy retirement, filled with happiness, health, and lots of traveling. I share too that I certainly will miss Joanne, and I want to thank her for her welcoming spirit when I started in this position last year.
On behalf of the Central Office staff, past and present, and there have been many, we thank Joanne for devoting her time, energy, and wisdom to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. Joanne, you will be missed. The board is coming to the podium. First, he will speak about Deborah Turner, who is not with us tonight. Deborah retired in December after 21 years of service to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Throughout Mrs. Turner's 21 years as a paraprofessional, has been nothing short of being there for students. She could be often seen welcoming students off the bus or welcoming them at the drop-off door by stating the child's name and giving them a warm good morning. Moreover, while working with students directly, she would provide positive phrases or comments, as well as gentle reminders that the child could do the work. It is also, has to be shared, how flexible Mrs. Turner was by always willing to cover a classroom in a moment's notice. As you know, as a paraprofessional, one moment could be a Grade III paraprofessional, and the next moment, they're covering art class, or a period, or they're going to physical education to cover a class because a meeting has to have inner flexibility, was greatly appreciated. In the end, it has been a pleasure to work alongside Mrs. Turner. Mrs. Turner's willingness to work hard, seek assistance, and meet students' needs was unmatched. Thank you for your daily contributions to Freetown Elementary School. I, Mrs. Turner, wish you continued fun playing hockey and going for those long, windy roads, rides on your bike.
The kindergarten team wanted to express these sentiments. Mrs. Turner was a part of the kindergarten team up until third grade stole her back for a few months before retirement. She was kindergarten's outdoor enthusiast and our go-to for creative projects and anything having to do with wildlife. We miss Mrs. Turner, but are so happy to know she's spending her retirement with her grandson, Gunner, and celebrating the wedding of her daughter, Holly.
Principal Francisco is coming to the podium. She will first highlight Pam Delaraco, who is not present tonight. Pam is retiring in two weeks after 23 years of service to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Thank you. Pam Delaraco. Pam has been an unbelievable force in the FLMS library, focusing on making sure that students engage with texts, both fiction and nonfiction. Her work with teachers of all grades supports a love for reading, and she oozes school spirit. No matter the season, Pam's always got a reason to decorate and celebrate. Those of you who know her know what I'm talking about. Her artistic flair for celebrating through installation art is second to none, and the students love seeing what she comes up with. And a super cool fun fact, she is an amazing gardener. Flowers are always brought in from home, from her garden, to bring a smile to faces in the office and around school. We will miss her so much.
Judy Ashley and Chris Kenworthy share, Pam has brought so much to the people of Freetown Lakeville Middle School over the years. Whether it's a witty remark or a perfectly timed bit of sarcasm, she always knows how to make you smile. It is fitting that the library has such large windows to let in the sunlight, just what her many beloved plants needed to thrive. Without them, the bookshelves would feel a little emptier. Every student who has attended Freetown Lakeville Middle School since 2002 knows how to properly use the library as a resource, and that's thanks to Pam's dedication, guidance, and passion for helping others. We will miss her homemade Pizzel cookies at Christmas.
Doris is retiring after 29 years of service in the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Doris. Doris has such an awesome way with students. Her humor, energy, and personality have made a positive impact on our students, and she is always willing to help out across the team. The eighth-grade hallway will feel a little less bright without that beautiful smile, but Doris's impact on our kids will always remain unforgettable.
A message from the Team 8200. Doris was retiring after many years of being one of the hardest workers they knew. She always was ready to jump in, take over, and get the job done, no matter what. Her energy and enthusiasm have been a bright spot for all of them, and they're really going to miss the spark that she brings every day. Doris's kindness and willingness to help will surely be missed, as she moves on will carry with us the warm spirit and dedication she showed in everything she did.
Sue Leahy, who could not be here tonight, is retiring after 18 years of service in the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Sue's ability to plan creative STEM projects will be so missed in the eighth-grade halls of FLMS. She's a creative problem solver who demonstrates engineering thinking for our FLMS Lakers every day.
Katie Shidi expresses, it's been a pleasure working with Sue for the last 18 years, and especially the last three together on the 8100 team. She is a true professional who uses her knowledge and creativity to inspire and engage students. It has been impressive to watch her build the eighth-grade STEM class from the bottom up, and even more impressive to see the incredible bridges, roller coasters, and race cars that students created in her class.
students created in her class. Sue is an incredible educator, and we at Freetown Lakeville Middle School have been lucky to know her as both a colleague and a friend.
And Celeste Missalakis, would you please join Principal Sullivan at the podium? Celeste retired in January after 20 years of service in the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Throughout her distinguished 20-year career as a paraprofessional, Celeste has been an invaluable asset to the Freetown Lakeville School District, not only in the classroom at GRAZE, but also as a representative for the paraprofessionals in the EAFL. Her greatest strength as a paraprofessional was her ability to work with students in small group settings where she ensured that each child received the individual attention he or she needed to succeed. Her patient and nurturing approach created an environment where students felt supported and encouraged to reach their full potential. Celeste became our go-to resource for students who struggled with organization. With her gentle guidance and practical strategy, she helped countless students develop the skills they needed to manage their academic responsibilities and build confidence in their abilities. Executive functioning schedule, Mrs. M. to the rescue. Celeste's dedication, compassion, and expertise have left an indelible mark on the lives of students, but she has also left an imprint on the hearts of her colleagues. Celeste possesses next-level empathy and has quietly provided a shoulder to cry on for so many of us who have been through profound personal loss, including me. This is simply part of who Celeste is. Her legacy of caring and commitment will continue to inspire our school community for years to come.
Holly Kristen Daly shared Celeste and I were grade-level Paris together before I began my teaching career. We were colleagues first, but fast friends. Celeste is not only a hard-working, caring, and loving woman, but a woman that has persevered through the worst imaginable, the loss of her son Gregory. I am in awe of Celeste. She was always willing to help in any way she could. Whether she was asked to step in as a substitute, take a small group for extra help, lend a hand at recess, or be an extra set of eyes in the classroom or the science lab, Celeste could always be counted on. Her patience and the relationship she made with our students was admirable. They loved when Mrs. M. entered the room. When Celeste said she was retiring, I said, "I can't like it," a quote we often use that her beloved Gregory used as a child. "I still can't like that she left us, but wish her much luck and love in her retirement, and always."
Kevin retired in December after 20 years of service in the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Kevin dedicated two decades to ensuring that the students and the staff could learn and work in a clean, safe, and welcoming environment at the intermediate school. His meticulous attention to detail meant that our classrooms were tidy, our hallways cleaned, and our bathrooms were always sanitary and well-stocked, and every corner of the building reflected his pride in his work. GRAZE was Kevin's school. Kevin was a beloved member of the staff who greeted students with warm smiles, often encouraging words during tough days, served as a steady reassuring presence in the cafeteria at lunch with me, and in the halls throughout the day. You made lunch duty fun. Kevin could handle any challenge, from emergency cleanups to preparing spaces for special events, always with professionalism and good humor. He leaves a legacy of service, kindness, and dedication.
Barbara Flanders, GRAZE teacher, noted the following about you, Kevin. All you ever had to do was ask. Over his many years, Kevin Steins has truly embodied this phrase, always welcoming a new staff as they prepared their classrooms to providing an immediate response to students who could not navigate a stubborn lock. Kevin's commitment to maintaining a building that our Freetown Lakeville community could be proud of has been unparalleled throughout his years. And I personally want to say that GRAZE was the school where I started, not even two years ago, and you were one of the most welcoming people I had met in the district when I came in, so I thank you for that.
Well, thank you to our administrators and colleagues for sharing kind words and thoughtful personal connections. I wish all the retirees the best of everything for a happy and healthy retirement. Congratulations on your many, many years of outstanding service to the district, but most importantly, to students and our school community. Thank you and congratulations. Comments?
Yeah, we'll take a recess.
Chair is asking for a brief recess. We have snacks.
Reconvene the Freetown Lakeville Regional School Committee meeting at 7:36. We are down to agenda item... One B.
One B and C. I don't know if it makes sense, just to save principals' time, to sort of group the two things together, the school improvement plan and the policy handbook changes, if that makes sense.
Yes, because you're voting at the end of the agenda.
Yes, we're going to do all the votes at the end, so why don't I defer to you on who's first, and we can take it from there.
So we will have Principal Ward come up, and he'll begin with his handbook changes, and then he'll move into the school improvement plan update.
So good evening, everyone, and thank you, as always, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Freetown Elementary School community. So it is with great respect that I ask for the committee to consider the changes to the FES student handbook as proposed by the Freetown Elementary School Council Team. It is my understanding you do have the potential changes in front of you, so I will not read them to you. I will quickly go over the main topics. The top portion is obviously the change in dates and the names, and the welcoming of Mr. Emory and Mrs. Richards, excuse me, to the school committee with their updated email. Page five, absent students. Just so this is outlined in there, oftentimes, we will get a phone call about, well, I called in, my child was absent, and it was excused, and then the report card will come on out, or the progress report will come on out, and it will not state the excused absence. They are combined as one, so we wanted to make sure we were clear in that. Page 14, this is obviously to Freetown Elementary School morning drop-off, just making sure that it is outlined there. As we all know, mornings, everyone is trying to get their morning off into a very good start, and this outlines that process for them very clearly. Page 21 would be the progress reports, also known as report cards. What they are based on, grade-level standards, that they are standard base report cards. They are not your A, B, C, D, F. They are actually outlined here, determine proficiencies of exceeding proficiency, approaching proficiency, and developing proficiency, and it is on a trimester basis. That is outlined there. You can see the school hours. That's to be determined. I know further down the agenda tonight, there will be a conversation about that from Dr. Starkey. The school ground usage, these signs are posted on grounds, and we're just making sure that it is within the student handbook about no trespassing order from dusk till dawn on campus while school is in session. And then visitors and volunteers. Again, we have been going through this process for a couple of years now. It just wasn't outlined, and we sort of missed it, so we thought it was advantageous of us to get it into our handbook, so it just outlines when you come to visit the school in the raptor process and making sure that you are properly checked into the school. Any questions?
Great. Any discussion or questions regarding policy manual changes to Freetown Elementary School?
I have a couple of questions. The first, you kind of mentioned at the start that you were going to update the school committee members with Mr. Emory and Ms. Richards, but I only saw Mr. Emory listed, but you have...
Okay, that's fine. It may just be a document that I updated, but I apologize. It is on the one I'm reading in front of me, but not necessarily maybe the one that you're reading, so I apologize, Mrs. Richards. It is here in front of me, so...
Oh, I noticed that. And then my second question is about the morning drop-off procedures, about parking in designated spots, because one of the concerns I've heard from parents is about the parking and whether or not it's in designated spots. Do we have someone that enforces that? Like, does Asero Maderas help with that on the days he's there? Or how do we address that?
Yeah, I mean, he is a presence to there. Unfortunately, we do have signs that state no parking in this area. We are trying our best, including myself, to get out there and say, hey, not really a safe zone to be parking. We do place some cones out there, but it is definitely a work in progress, but that's why we've outlined a designated spot, so we can go back to this and be very clear in our handbook that it is outlined and spelled out, and then we can go forward from there. But Asero Maderas is aware of it.
Okay. Because I don't participate in the morning drop-off, but I know in the afternoons, people line up on the side of the building, so do they line up on the side of the building in the morning as well?
No, it is a rolling, I mean, they could. It's a rolling drop-off, which we, and again, we have opened up the large playground fence, so it's sort of, instead of going onto Memorial Drive, it goes in and around, so it's like this rolling driveway. Our hope is, if you're in that rolling driveway, parents will remain in the car, and the children, if able, can get out of the car in a manner that's safe, say goodbye, gather their belongings, and go in. At first, in September and October, the parent may get out very quickly to do that, and we're like, come up, we've got to get used to this, we've got to get in, but we don't want to limit the families that perhaps still want to walk their child to the door, so that's where they park in a designated spot. They walk onto the sidewalk, and that's where they could say goodbye, certainly there. So it's not necessarily like a lineup, if you will, but it's this walking patrol, if you will, over to where the gymnasium wall is on that side. And that's where, I was talking about, Mrs. Turner says that warm good morning, it's right there. So that's the location, so...
Those are the only questions I had.
Great. Any other questions or discussion from members on Freetown Elementary School's handbook? Seeing none, a vote is required on this, but we're going to vote at the end of the meeting as part of a bundle with all the schools. So, Mr. Ward, please update us on your school improvement.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'll try and make this brief. We have four goals. You can see it up there. The first two goals are wrapped around ELA and math, and the ELA one is one where students, 100% of students, will make progress toward being strategic readers. And you can see there's some domains up there, phonics, phonemic awareness, phonics, and high frequency. But when we're talking about this goal, we are on pace and on target. You can see the overall from 25, 24, 23. For those of you, let me just spell out what BOY stands for, beginning of the year. T1 is tier-one instruction. That means like whole-group instruction. T2 is tier-two. That is teacher table, could be some small push-in intervention. And tier-three is your really intensive, as you heard Mrs. Cunha and Mrs. Trevino provide that. So here, that's where we land at the beginning of the year. You see it there, 33%, 56%, and 11% of the students. And I've shared this over the years with you. Our goal, always within this triangle of tier-one, is 80% at the green, tier-one. Tier-two is the yellow. We want that at 15%. And tier-three, which would be the red area, intensive work, we want it at 5%. You can see, over these three years, from beginning of the year to end of year, where we fall as a staff. And kudos to the staff, there's many of them sitting here. This work is their constant pursuit of just progress and being just consistent with their work and monitoring that and giving success when it's there. So job well done to them. Goal number two, same thing. I won't have to go as far as explaining it, but you see it, it's now math. 100% of students will work towards becoming strategic mathematicians. There you go. We are very close. You see the end of the year, it says 79. It's at 80. We're right there, and you can see it over three years. That's 69%, 77%, 79%. We are right there, working towards that. And if you take a look at the beginning of the year, tier-three, we had 11% of our students. At the end of the year, zero. 0% of our students are in that intensive area. Goal number three is the writing response to text. You can see the data there. I came to you a couple of years ago, very, we weren't happy with the results, and clearly this, my staff rolled up their sleeves, sort of had to rethink and regather our thoughts, and then you can see the progress. There's where we landed in 2024, and we have every reason to believe, yes, it's pending MCAS scores, that we are going to land there, if not higher than that piece. So you're seeing gains of, if you're looking to 22, we're at 24%, and now we're at 50%. And then the last one, social-emotional learning, again, on pace, on target. It's about developing a school where it's a conducive environment for their learning, for their social-emotional needs, and their academic needs, a place where they know they belong, where relationships are going to be fostered and developed, and it's on target. You can see the behavior referrals that Dr. Neves, who's the school adjustment counselor, and I monitor internally. There's been a drop over the last three years, and that's kudos to the teachers in working through our PBIS support system, and then also having the wherewithal to work with our students. Chronically absent, three years ago, that was terrible, just being honest, 31%. But you can see where we were with that constant, hey, phone calls to parents, letters home, and we're getting students consistently in school, and it has to do greatly with the relationships. They want to be in school, they want to learn and be the best child. And a parent survey that I give out annually each year, it's about 20 questions, that's on a scale of like strongly disagree, disagree, and then goes up to strongly agree. On all 20 questions, it's in a positive way, the 80% either strongly agree or agree with the question, and the most proud one, I can say, is proud to be a Freetown Fox. On the current one, it's 98% of our students feel they are proud to be a Freetown Fox. So with that, any questions about the SIP, progress monitoring of Freetown Elementary School?
Any questions from members? Just a couple of comments from me.
Absolutely.
Great job on all the goals. Remarkable on the writing and the chronically absent. I know, Ms. Fleming, we've talked about writing and the work that you and through your staff has done, has been incredible. I'll put you on the spot. The general impressions on the three-year goal process? It works great for some goals, because you can see growth over time. Just thoughts on that?
Dr. Starkey has asked me that question, and I fully support. It just makes sense as to, we're monitoring those goals, we set it out there, and here's the plan. It allows us, for example, the writing one, right? So as we develop in this, and we need professional develop on it, so we've got to get an understanding, like the science of writing, so everyone needs to get on, so that looks like year-one of that work. And then what does that look like in the classroom? So what is the task we're going to ask? How are we going to form rubrics? How are we giving feedback? So that's like year-two, and then we start to see, here's the progress to get to make. So that makes sense for me, and that's certainly with the chronically absent. That is almost like a year-to-year piece, but certainly, as we work out over three years, I think that makes sense. I'm a school of pre-K through three, so four years, five years of that just makes sense for the students as they continue to grow.
It's also a shift in culture coming out of COVID, too, so the three-year goal works, but I was just curious, under general impressions, because we shifted to that three-goal process three years ago.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and it just makes sense in the way that we take a look at our goals and monitor them over the years.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
No other questions from me? Any questions from members, comments? Discussion? There's no vote required on the school improvement plan, so we can move on to the next school.
All right. Thank you. Here from Asero Amst, principal. So we are moving back in your packet to the handbook changes. You should have a one-page list of changes. Perhaps it's double-sided.
Okay, thank you. So for the proposed handbook changes, again, the front page, just the date, the interim superintendent of schools updating the school committee as well. I did not have Melinda Richards on here, so I will make sure that that is added. I only had Timothy, so I did not have that on there, my apologies. I will make sure that is added also. On page nine, I did add, under our bus rules and everything, just bus conduct. also. On page nine, I did add, under our bus rules and everything, just bus conduct. The bus driver informs us of any incidents that happen, ones that are a little bit more severe, that might need phone calls, discipline, and investigation. Discipline slips are written up, and then they're provided to us. We obviously track those. Any student that gets a third discipline slip, I always have a meeting with that family. And then Kenny Rosendies also joins us if needed. We obviously try to work with that family, but I did want families to know that after that third slip, there could be a short-term suspension off the bus due to safety. So that is on page nine. School hours for page 10, again, is to be determined right now. Page 21 of the school grounds, just like Mr. Ward said, we also have a sign out there, so again, no trespassing while school is in session. The progress reports for page 22 is exactly what Mr. Ward went over. We mirror that school for our standards-based progress reports. And then on page 23, visitors and volunteers, again, same thing as Mr. Ward. We put and tightened up exactly what that policy looks like when visitors and volunteers come to Asa Wamset. And we also did put on page 22 that whether it's an excused or an unexcused absence at the school, that that is still documented on their report card. That seems to be a very big question for parents. And that's it.
Any questions or comments from members?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes.
Thank you.
Miss White.
So you mentioned the progress report language, and then the unexcused absences language is consistent between FES and AES. And I noticed that you had the bus conduct page nine, but I didn't see the bus conduct on Principal Ward's changes. So does that mean he already has it there? Are we keeping it consistent between FES, AES, and GRAES at the primary levels?
I'm not sure what Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward?
I just don't have the full handbooks in front of me, but I noticed that change was at one elementary school, but not the other.
Questions regarding bus conduct?
Yes. Page 22 of the Freetown Elementary School handbook, it states, "On the bus, students are expected to," and then it lists there. Now, I don't get so specific, as the students reported for misconduct on a bus may lose their privilege of riding on the bus, I don't get so specific as to say after three infractions. But you certainly can consider that, but it is outlined here, "On the bus, students are expected to," with three, six, eight bullet points there.
I was just wondering if it was consistent between the elementary schools and GRAES?
No, but to your point, if I can, through the vice chair, we do have work to do in aligning the handbooks. I mean, I can speak to that from my previous experiences here in the district. We've always developed our handbooks in a bit of isolation, right? We align them per building, per grade level, and then in accordance with the policy manual. But on the list of items to approach over the upcoming year is an alignment of some of these policies. We could, at some point, develop a portion of the handbook that is fluid throughout the entire district, and then a section specific to the schools. We just have not had the time to have those types of discussions, but I look forward to working on that with our principals.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Chair recognizes Mr. Clark.
Do we have legal authority to suspend a student from the bus?
We do.
Yes.
Yes.
We do. The bus is considered school grounds when they're riding on the bus.
Depending on the.
Again, it's just short-term, like if there was, I've never suspended anyone off the bus permanently, except for maybe a student that needed a van or a different type of transportation, which I've worked with special ed to take care of. So I've never done that. I just found, when we talked about this with our school council, that I feel like parents, when it is bus issues, they're not perceived as serious as, again, in school. And we've decided, we have students that have more than three slips. They tend to have a lot of issues on the bus, so we just wanted something in there that parents knew, there's a process that we'd have a meeting with the bus company, we would try to work with you, but after three times, that there is the option of they might have, you know, a day off the bus, or whatever that short-term suspension we felt was adequate.
And the understanding that resulted from those meetings with the parents are some other measures, perhaps a change in the seat on the bus?
Exactly.
And some other things are taking place before you get to a suspension.
Students that might need fidgets on the bus, or again, it's case-by-case basis, we work with it. I just wanted something uniform for everyone, that everyone knew this was the protocol.
I should have probably been suspended when I was riding the bus.
We would have worked with you first.
That's a goal.
That's a goal. I'll set one.
Any other questions, comments? I will spare you the goal-length question, given the grade spans are the same. So thank you so much.
Great.
I am, Dr. Solomon.
School of.
Oh, School of Influent, sorry, please.
No, that's okay. All right, so Asa Wamset has three goals. So the first one focused mainly on the science-based reading comprehension. So being an elementary school, obviously phonics is huge, and it's something we've been our priority for about five or six years now. I won't go in depth with everything that we've done for that, but it was last year, at the end of year two of the school improvement plan, where we actually really took a look at comprehension. So if you look at the very first table, that says 2023, 2024, and I highlighted in yellow, so grade one was at about 60 or 63% on or above grade level. Grade two was at 62% in both, and grade three was at 61, and then 55% on or above grade level. That's almost half of our third graders, not on grade level, for comprehension due to this one assessment. But anyway, as we analyze data, we realize that comprehension is definitely something that we needed to look at, and that was the focus of this particular goal. Obviously, we still look at phonics and everything else. So if you just look over at the table for 2024, 2025, they really knocked it out of the park. So for, our goal was to have at least 65% this year, and then increasing over the next, my next three-year school improvement plan will continue with comprehension. So grade three, again, last year, I know those students are gone, but last year in grade three, it was 61 and 55%. So this year for grade three for informational text, it was 31 to 72%, and literature was 33% to 76%. And then in grade two, again, it was 68% and 70%, which again, was growth from the 62% of last year. Grade one missed it by 1%, so they stayed stagnant at around 64, which is what they have been for the last few years. But I will speak about grade one in just a second. And then for kindergarten, for winter, for informational, they tested in winter. They don't test in the fall, but they went up to 87% on or above grade level. And then for literature, they went from 76 to 92% on or above grade level. So there was a lot that we did this year for that goal. Due to time, I won't go over everything, but just briefly, we started by analyzing and unpacking the standards, the comprehension standards, that again, we've had for years, but just taking another look at them. So we actually had the standards. Each teacher in grade level then wrote what they did to implement that standard and how it's assessed. So assessing comprehension is a little bit more difficult than assessing things like phonics. So after that, we, let's see, we started looking at the vocabulary. So we took the vocabulary from grade K to three from the standards, made a progression, attached the same visual for all the vocab boards. So in kindergarten, first, second, and third, all this purpose, same visual, hopefully more consistent across grade levels. And just some other things we looked at, even like book bins in the classroom that read to self-time, that happens every day in every classroom. You add up those minutes, it's over an hour a week. So just looking at those things that we're doing in the classroom, what strategies do we have for comprehension? And just really making it more explicit. So something as simple as, it's not a picture, that's an illustration. We need to use that language, that discourse. So that was kind of goal number one, and that comprehension goal is going to continue into my three-year plan, so you'll see that next year as well. I'm going to go on to goal two, which is also math, which Mr. Ward talked about as well, creating thinking classrooms. Again, in the math specialists that I've worked with, students have been a huge part of that. So Dorian Doobie is the one that kind of ran that initiative at Asa Wamset Elementary, and it kind of grew from there. So we used numbers, number sense, basically, numbers and operations. And again, the data there, if you just look at the highlighted yellow, it's huge growth. We made huge gains within this year. And again, if you look at last year compared to this year, there really is huge progress there. So the thinking classrooms really just talk about, they're built on those standards for math practice. So this is just one example. They basically took the standards, they made them in kid-friendly little cards. They might have them on rings that kids go through, or, and kids actually refer to these. So I choose appropriate math tools, and I can explain why I use them. So a teacher might actually say, what standards did we use in this lesson? And kids actually know what standards they're using and how important that is, to really know how to solve a problem and what those skills are, as opposed to just rote memorization. So that was the math. And then the last one is about, again, diversity, equity, and inclusion at Asa Wamset. Basically, again, elementary school, we focus on being kind and inclusive, period. We talk about diversity. We simply say diversity is different. Differences make us who we are at Asa Wamset. We run assemblies at Asa Wamset at least every month. We try to do them bi-weekly. Those are created by myself as well as staff, and I do send them out to parents before I present them, in case there was anything that parents wanted to see before I'm teaching it to their kids, which has been requested. So I do do that. Those are two books that I've used this year, The Invisible Boy and The Sour Grape. We always just have a little lesson and some sort of engaging activity in the school-wide assembly, and then there's always follow-through after. So The Invisible Boy is just about a boy who came from Korea, and he had different food at lunch. He was made fun of, basically went to a lunch table, sat by himself, and he was not included. So staff went back to their rooms, they did a chart paper of inclusion and exclusion, and what that looks like in a classroom. We hung them all up in the middle of the school. So there's always just some sort of follow-through, and that also just stems around our core values of respect, safety, and responsibility. And that's it. We do have the discipline slips there, so that is kind of how we measured it. So last year, we had 41 discipline slips, so we do organize them by category. And this was around either being excluded, so the majority is recess times, or inappropriate language. So again, mostly kindergartners in first grade. They're curious, they might ask a question about another kid's skin color, because they've never seen that before, and again, they're five. It's curiosity. So, any questions?
Questions, comments? It's just great evidence of growth and progress in using data to improve your teaching and learning. Thank you to you and Mr. Ward. You certainly have pride in a proud of your school and through your staff, too. Thank you for everything they do.
Thank you.
Certainly a proud place to be.
Yes, I definitely want to thank the staff. I meant to do that at the beginning. I couldn't do that without them. Or Terry, honestly, is curriculum guru, and she's been amazing in all that's up there, visiting classrooms with me. We never got to the comprehension ones, but we'll do it next year.
But both you and Mr. Ward have presented clear evidence of progress and growth, so thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Principal Sullivan, who's coming up. Principal Sullivan is not requesting any changes to the GRAES handbook this year, so she'll be presenting her school improvement plan update.
Right, so I didn't have any changes. I had four members of the, four parents are members of the school council and four teachers. And we did go through it carefully. What we came up with were, and my staff wouldn't be one bit surprised, some typographical errors. That seems to be my, I never took typing in school, and so that seems to be a weakness. So we pick them up every once in a while. But I will need to go through and put the school times, if that, if they are changed, I'll have to address that. And I hadn't included anything on the visitor and, you know, guests of the, you know, coming into the building. But in listening to Mike and Bethany, I'm going to add that, if that's okay. It will mirror theirs, will mirror the district policy.
Perhaps at the end, perhaps at the end of the evening, when you're voting, you could, you could include in the vote the opportunity to align some of these elements of the handbook.
Which will include the statements you just made, so yes.
And just to respond to Courtney's question, I have to say, it's never come up. You know, there's, the bus is, you know, behavior is in the handbook, just like any other behavior. I don't know what it is, but I get one. It's a one-and-done, so I, it wouldn't get to the point. It hasn't come up where I've ever gotten three, where I've had to get to that. I get one, it's settled, and that's where we are. So that wasn't included in mine. And that's it for me for the handbook. Okay. Okay, so you have the three goals that we have up there. We've been talking about these, you know, for three years, most of the people on the panel. I have pie charts, I have bar charts, I have all those things. However, I thought we would just put it all together with, our three goals are very unique topics, yet they all have the same targeted outcome, which was, of course, improved academic performance. The first goal was related to social emotional competencies. The second was related to a sense of belonging, and the third was a reduction in chronic absenteeism. The connection is when students have grown in self-awareness, self-management, and social awareness, when they enjoy a sense of belonging, and when they attend school regularly without excessive absences, they are available to learn. And then they may make their learning visible to us through the improved scores on a variety of measurements. The measurements include teacher-generated formative and summative assessments. This year, the teachers worked very hard in both classes, ELA and math, I'm going to say all classes, on creating engaging centers, stations for learning with students, and on, including five to seven, five to seven formative assessments. And through their own goals and my evaluation of their achievement of their goals, we see that the children have improved on those formative assessments. We, of course, don't have the MCAS data yet, but we do have the iReady data. And so there's a lot of different ways, a lot of different pieces of that we can look at, like the stuff that Michael had up, like what Bethany spoke about. But I wanted to share the biggest win of all, that I recognize that I think, as I said, with the children feeling a sense of belonging, with them having better attendance, and with them being able to self-regulate and attend to classes appropriately, they're able to show us what they've learned. So my, what I see as a very big win on iReady in ELA and math across the building was, in math, I'm comparing, I didn't do the middle of the year, I'm just saying, when you see this big difference, from the fall, from the fall, when students came in in math, overall, 32% were at or above grade level. They are now 74% at or above grade level overall in math. In ELA, when they tested in the fall, when they came to us, 37% were at or above grade level, and right now, they are 55% at or above grade level. Steve, to your point, you mentioned the writing. That's something that Mrs. Fleming and the staff and I identified when we looked at MCAS in late August, and then when they came in in September. It's been an issue in the building that we've looked at, all the way down to special subject teachers. The art teacher has students reflecting on their artwork and writing, the music teacher, the library teacher, even phys ed. So we're writing across, in every classroom, in every opportunity that we can possibly get. So that, you know, that's helping with some of this on the iReady, reading, and then, of course, writing as well, in the classroom. As far as the individual goals, the first one, as I said, that was the social emotional learning. And in all the stuff that I've shared over the last three years, I have to bring up those school adjustment counselors again. They have, they are still keeping that copious data that I was able to share with you to prove that we really need to have, needed to have two to service the children appropriately. And that's what, that's what they do, where we're able to get children back into classrooms. And we're able to identify children really quickly that need, like a tier-three intervention, so that they can work with those children and get them back to classes. What we, what we came up with is, we think that right now, they are outside of their caseloads, making contact with about 28% of the whole population. So they're servicing all children, not children only on 504s and IEPs, but any child who's having any type of issue. We've had the beauty of seeing Kyla Maderas, who worked with our current fifth graders, worked with them in fourth grade, and now has looped up to fifth grade. So she knows nearly every child fairly well. So she's able to work with those teachers and say, let me tell you a little bit, you having a problem with this youngster in class? Let me tell you a little bit about that. And how she can help. And that will be the same process this year with Mrs. Panini going up with the next group. So we have seen that that has helped very much as far as our students being able to attend to learning, as far as the social emotional piece of it. The, where am I? Okay, the belonging piece, this is one, and I think that I heard this come up when you asked about the three-year goal. And I mentioned this in January when we did about the, the three-year goal. And I mentioned this in January when we did the update. It's tricky, because it's a two-year school. So right now, I don't have one child in my building who, their, their data can help me with, you know, prove any, you know, like, the kids that I had the first year, there's not one child that's there in the third year. But in conversations with Mrs. Fleming, and then just as recently as Monday, in conversation with Dr. Starkey, we talked about how I can rewrite goals so that they are reflective of the children that I have in front of me, like all grade students will, or 75% of grade students will. So that, this one, I can't, the second goal, I can't say that I have data to say that I met it. Anecdotally, I believe that we met that goal, but I don't have the data to back that one up. And that's the belong, that's the belonging piece. And so I didn't, you know, we didn't do a student survey, and that's, that's something else to discuss about, are we going to survey students to see what their sense of belonging feels like? But again, it's not even the same population, so I need to find a better way to write that. The third goal was on attendance, and we absolutely met that goal. That was to improve how, how many weeks we got to the 94%, which is the ultimate goal to, you know, avoid higher, higher numbers of chronic absenteeism. We worked very hard on identifying the students that had chronic absenteeism, worked very closely with those families. That started with phone calls, followed up by, if it, if it continued, followed up with letters, followed up with parent meetings. In addition to it, us exceeding the number of weeks, reaching the 94%, there were many, many weeks that we exceeded 94% by a, by a large margin, like 97%. So we absolutely met goal number three. That's all I have for you.
Questions or comments for Dr. Sullivan?
Just a comment for me. It may be worth looking at the intermediate school in terms of a two-year goal or a one-year goal, given the grade span, just to get some data that we can look at. And on the handbook, I, I think we'll give you some language and amend when we get to the vote, some alignment language for consistency. But there should be a way that the members can see any changes specific to that handbook at some point. But I think if we do the alignment language in the vote, that allows us to be ready for the '25, '26 school year.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
It does.
All right, so maybe we could share that with the members when you draft some changes.
That sounds great. Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Middle School.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. So, proposed handbook changes, we'll start with that. We have a short list. The beginning of the list is just the updating of some of the names. And so, yes, we need to add our new school committee members. We are adding Dr. Barbara Starkey. We are adding a couple of our teachers' names, school adjustment counselor name, change of a name of a teacher, school nurse name change. And then, as we get into the pages, page 10 is listed as one of the changes, extended absence, just adding a reentry plan for students that are out for an extended period of time, to include just sort of what happens at that reentry plan, so that students upon reentry can enter successfully. Page 12, just updating the grade release update. We do that annually. It's just the dates that each grade book release date happens for parents. Page 15 says, at the end of grade level, grade level teams remove the "we solicit" part of the, the sentence, and end the paragraph with the sentence prior. This is, so this is a detail that I think may have been something that was done in the past, where we would solicit input on behalf of parents to see which teams they wanted to be placed in. And I don't feel like, and I know Jack can speak to this, we, is, is a practice that we do anymore. And so we felt like we needed to take that out of the handbook, because it does create sometimes inequities across teams. So we wanted to make sure that that was clear for parents. Page 16 says, change guidance secretary. We will need to update that, and the nurse as well. Page 22, cellphone and headphone and electronic device section. We just feel like adding the words smart watches is important as we move forward with technology. We need to understand that students can still communicate during the day and be distracted by the use of a smart watch. Page 34, just briefly talks about field trips, and we wanted to remove the last bullet in that field trip description, because it, it sort of gives the idea to the reader that there's an option to not go on the field trip, and therefore then stay in school and participate in an alternative activity. And while we can do that for students that, for whatever reason, absolutely cannot participate in the trip, we, what we don't want to do is, is, is create sort of this, okay, so some kids are going, and some kids are not going, and then, in terms of equity and, and opportunity to learn off-site, you know, we really want to push all of our kids to go. And so we felt like putting that bullet there just sort of like tells people that there is an option to stay in school. And while we understand that there are always, you know, extenuating circumstances, we didn't want to have that listed as sort of like a, an option that parents, because it feels like you can choose it. Okay? So that is it for my list of changes. Any questions?
Questions or comments related to the handbook? Ms. Amory?
I just have one. On the extended absence, reentry plan, there's already a section regarding the extended absence, and I think the timeframe is already there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Moving on to your school improvement plan update.
Sure. We have four goals, so I'll go through each one. I know that earlier in the year, I had come in front of all of you and given a more comprehensive slideshow of where we are in terms of each of these. So this is a very, sort of like what Liz was saying, it's a brief summary of, of where we landed. And so I'll go right into goal one. Goal one talks about active learning tasks, and actually adding to that, the implementation of those active learning tasks, but also adding how students are making their thinking visible. Are they using academic vocabulary? And so, and are they doing that successfully so that they can then practice using that vocabulary in order to improve their writing? And so we do feel like that the goal of 10% increase in those active learning tasks planned was met. That is evident in the artifacts that we have collected through student work, but also learning walks. We've conducted a series of learning walks this year at our school with our teachers. And it's really great to sit down with teachers in the debrief, collect the data, push it into a Google form, and then spit out some real concrete evidence as to where we are, and where we started at the beginning of the year, and where, how far we've come, and the use of that language, and students practicing owning that tier-two and three language. So, goal two is basically thinking about the school-wide rubrics that were aligned with the learning expectations that had begun at the beginning of the school improvement plan. Through evidence collected throughout the two years prior to me coming on, and then also additional evidence this year, we are continuing to meet that goal by using those school-wide rubrics with students, with teachers, with families. They are reported out on the report cards, and each content continues to use their four-point rubric to measure and report out on those key skills that we identified that all of our learners should be practicing across their classes. As we wrap up term four for this year, we will be looking at those expectations and pulling a report to see where any gaps or any need for special attention might lie. Okay? Goal three, sort of like what Bethany was saying, you know, is, is around that sense of belonging. And I think you heard this echoed in every principal who's come up here, in every comment that they've made, where it, it can be difficult to measure a sense of belonging. And so one of the things that we focused on was our chronic attendance students, who had been chronically out in, in the past. And, and because I think by default, if a student doesn't feel like it's important that they come to school regularly, they will wind up being out over 10% of the school year, which then would be flagged as chronically absent. And so we really, really focused on that this year in our weekly wraparound meetings. So with my, meetings with myself, Assistant Principal Olivera, and all of our school adjustment counselors, and guidance counselors, and sometimes SRO Bartholomew, and even the school nurse, we would come together to talk about behavior, attendance, and grades. We call it like a bag check. And so it's, it's looking at who are students that are popping up more frequently out, work avoidance, behavioral stuff, what is going on with our kids, and how can we set actions in place to turn that around for our kids. And so we really would look at our weekly attendance summaries to make sure that we were highlighting students that needed phone calls home, that parents needed letters home. We were talking to parents that frankly just thought, you know, okay, thank you, I really appreciate this heads-up. I wasn't really realizing the number of times my student was out. And then just having conversations with those students as well to push for them to be in school more, because it does matter when they come to school. And so, right now, we are looking at making some big progress in that number. Again, in the, in the winter, when I came to, I had given you a report where in '22, '23, we were at 13.8% chronically absent students across the school. In '23, '24, we went down to 11.7. And at the time that I built this slide, we were at 10.9, but as of today, we're closer to 10. And so we're really working with a two-pager, a set of, two pages of kids that are on the cusp of really getting close to those 17, 18, and we're like, you cannot be absent. Stay in school until the end of the school year, and you will be doing awesome things. So we're really focusing on that chronic attendance list of students. We're also defining social awareness and belonging, and the importance in building inclusive community by doing different events for kids during school that foster that, like, excitement about coming to school, like, it's fun to come to school. And we do, we have instituted a few really fun events for kids during the school year to celebrate their accomplishments, perfect attendance, honor roll stuff, pep rally. And I think those things matter to kids, and so that can foster that sense of belonging and wanting to come to school. We, and as I said, that weekly wraparound meeting really, I feel, has helped to, to monitor that. Goal four is thinking about reading comprehension strategies and how they impact students in all academic areas. And so some of the work we did this year involved, and, and thank you, Terry, for providing all of our teachers access to iReady, instead of just the reading, the ELA and the math teachers. Every teacher in my building knows how to use iReady. They know how to pull data from it. They know how to build purposeful groupings using iReady. This is art, music, phys ed, everyone, right? STEM, science, everyone. You can use iReady and does use iReady to build groupings and to look at where our students are in terms of reading and math ability. And so we, this year, again, tied academic language and accountable talk to reading comprehension, just to, kind of like coming out of COVID, just to make sure that our kids are being more comfortable, kind of like making that thinking visible, thinking, thinking out loud, so that then they can write and improve their writing, right? So in looking at our iReady data, in 2023, at the end of the, the second assessment, we had 362 students out of roughly 695, which is 52% rate at grade level or above grade level in reading. In 2024, that went up to 376, which is about 54%. And then this year, right now, after our second assessment, we are at 57%. So we are growing. We are improving. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? No, thank you. The coordination we're seeing from elementary to intermediate to middle is, is certainly a tribute to, to the main office, but also the leadership, and again, through, through the teachers. It's appreciated, and the progress and growth is clear. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think Terry is that, it's kind of like thread that binds us in terms of alignment.
Yeah, I'm going to place it on the CLs and the work that I do with the curriculum leaders. They really are cohesive.
Yeah.
No, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Francis. We have Principal Desert, who will be making three presentations tonight, the handbook changes, school improvement plan. And then while she's at podium, I believe it would necessitate a move to the next thing on the agenda, which is a request for an alteration to the program of studies.
Thank you very much.
It's next, it's directly next.
And I was thinking of field trip is...
No, it's not the high school.
Oh, it's, I was looking for B, C, D, and E.
So looking at the sheet for the handbook updates, this certainly for a 103-page document, you know, we have things certainly to clean up and names to change and that kind of thing. But this may look like many things, but they're all related. So to get a little bit of context, I've met with the faculty council, the school council, and our student roundtable multiple times, and these come from students, parents, and teachers and staff. We also even had three college professors present to the faculty to identify important skills for the future student and for the future professional. We identified accountability as one of them, that that's a skill that we are responsible for teaching within our content. We want our students to show up and to be engaged. So therefore, we focused on reducing lost time on learning via tardies, absences, and dismissal. And that's connected also to the school improvement plan. So when you see these about loss of credit and appeals, that's not what's different here. You know, 10 excused absences. You, to back up a little bit, we have our freshmen, we can use the CRA process, the Child Requiring Assistance, use the court system to try to get a chronically absent student in. We lose that ability at about 15 and a half. So most of our students experiencing this, we need other ways to do that. So engagement and all that wonderful stuff. But also, we came up with a couple of ideas with students to utilize social probation. That if we have students who are over 10 absences, that have very high tardies, that they may not be able to attend extracurricular field trips, to attend the homecoming dance, that kind of thing. It's an intervention that we would use. We're also proposing Saturday school. We have Monday detention, which is a three-hour detention on Mondays. That's used for part of our discipline. But Saturday school, we're proposing is more of an intervention to recover credit, to make up lost time on learning. It will not change anything in the budget. It's from that same line. And we have a certified teacher who's set up to do that, twice a month. And that's to focus on lost time on learning. So the rest of this here talks about what social probation is. The change to tardies isn't so much about the change of over five tardies, you know, it's office detention, Monday detention, parent meetings, all of that. But we added in there the Saturday detention, so that's why we put that in there. So it doesn't change the number of them, but it changes, puts in the social probation and the Saturday detention. This past year, we tried a pilot, which was successful, and it's called a buyback. And students must create this process. They reach out to the main office, and they can buy back a tardy, for instance, by being punctual for 10, and, and present for 10 days in a row. And that really had a good effect, too. So putting it in their hands to practice accountability. So these are all associated in that way, but a little bit different.
Questions, discussion, or comments about policy changes? Hearing none, thank you.
Excellent.
School improvement.
So, so school improvement plan, the first one is to increase inclusive practices and programming for all learners, and to raise MCAS scores as, as an indicator for that. We have seen our ELA increased by 6%. We didn't have as much room to grow. It's always been a very high one. Math has increased by 10%, and biology increased by 14%. So we're very pleased with that. Our accountability rating from the state went from 75 to 83 last year, and we're awaiting a new accountability score. And there are different things, you know, as MCAS has changed by law, but we think that we're very much on target for that. Our second goal is to build academic engagement and authentic learning experiences. And you heard that from the students in the top 10, you heard that from the teachers tonight. We have put in 17 courses in the past three years to increase our programming, including three integrated courses, which are for students in the life skills program with regular ed students. We added four of courses just this coming year. We've also added three grade 10 AP opportunities this, this past year for the first time, so giving more access to that. We've added AP seminar, and next year, we're, we have AP research. We've created a pathway for that. With the help of Terry Fleming, we have been exploring innovative career pathways, and we have gotten, we were awarded the grant, and we are creating the guide for that, and creating the pathways to do that with capstones and internships. So we think that we are on target for that. The third goal is, like many of the other schools, it's about excessive and chronic absenteeism. This chart shows that it was pretty high app in our hybrid year than, or the, the next year after that. We were able to lower it a little bit. It went up a bit in '23, '24. We've lowered a bit in this coming, in this, this year, '24 to '25, to 16% excessive and only 4% chronic. But we hope to even reduce that more with some of these things that we propose. more with some of these things that we proposed in our school handbook.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
Just a comment for me. You get them with a foundation of strong academics, social emotional skills, and attending school, because I've heard that theme throughout. And then you take them to a different level with your staff, and it was clearly on display at graduation the other night. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And your staff as well. So, thank you.
And if I may, through the vice chair, I just would like to acknowledge the work of Teri Fleming, the curriculum leaders, the teachers, our staff across all the buildings, our paraprofessionals, certainly our students, for their contributions to the work in the school improvement plan and to the planning and preparedness to present to you changes that they have suggested in the student handbook. So, I want to acknowledge all of the work that goes into what you heard about tonight. What you heard tonight was just the tip of that iceberg, right? All the work that's going on below, which you can see. So, I want to acknowledge that hard work. And I'd also like to call attention to what you're talking about, the through line that you can hear in these school improvement plans. And that's something newer to the district. Having one-year goals, we didn't always have the opportunity to establish a through line, make connections in the buildings, and then watch a goal expand across three years. And just to speak just for a second again about something you mentioned, Vice Chair Sova, about maybe a two-year goal for the Grace Building. I have been in communication with the principals, and we're talking around reestablishing another three-year goal, because if we go just the grade levels in the building, the high school might have a four-year goal, and this building might, right? So, we're trying to align more rather than kind of create something that might be separate. So, all due respect, we're going to have further conversation to it. I just didn't want you to see us come back with a two-year goal and think we weren't attentive to your suggestion.
Well said. And the goal is thoughtful conversations and collaboration with colleagues. And I don't have a strong opinion either way. I, as you know, do a school improvement plan.
Sure do. Yeah.
I understand the task, and I appreciate everything you do.
So, a round of applause for our high school presentation. And then, we do want to hear about the request to change the program of studies, Mrs. Desert. While you're there.
Right. So, we have statistics listed in our program of studies. Sometimes, we're able to offer that. Sometimes, we are not. We have a particularly competitive group that I've never, such as I've never seen before coming into our senior year. And they were veering off into AP statistics, trying to double their math and their number of AP. We have offered statistics in the past. Some schools have a very strong program. Ours has been smaller. We're really trying to pick that back up as one of the pathways. And it was listed only as college prep. So, if we could, if we could list this with an honors designation, those same students who are taking AP Calc would be able to take this. They would not take it for grade point average reasons at a college prep level, but this would give another pathway for them. So, this comes from the students really speaking out and wanting this opportunity. So, it is simply to change college prep to an honors designation instead.
Comments, discussion, questions? There is a vote required on this, which we will take at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Desert. We're moving along in the agenda. I believe we have an out-of-state field trip. This is the Kids Cafe Summer Program. Lisa Pacheco is requesting to take the students to Roger Williams Park Zoo. This is in front of you because Roger Williams is in Providence, Rhode Island. It's an out-of-state field trip. The date is July 11. They would be leaving the Grace Building at 11:00 AM, returning at approximately 4:00 PM. There are an anticipated number of 250 students and 30 staff going. That would include four buses, one preschool van, all district provided presentation.
All to approve.
Yeah, we will take the vote at the end, but any...
Any questions regarding this field trip?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If the family or the student doesn't want to attend, will they still be able to stay at Grace?
Yes. Yes. Lisa will provide day programming for the students who are not going on the trip.
Great. Just clarification. All the votes will be at the end.
That's what Chair Blom had asked for them to be at the end. If you'd like to take it now, you can take it now. It's up to you.
I think just to be consistent, because we have a whole list of votes to take at the end. My apologies, Mr. Clark. Any other questions, comments?
Draw the motion.
Thank you.
The only question I have is, is this an added expense, or is this going to be part of the...
I believe that there is a fee to the students attending the field trip, and it is the cost of admission to the zoo. Moving right along, bringing before you tonight, the AI policy for you to have a discussion.
Yeah. At the discretion of the chair, may I take five and give a policy update first on that?
True. Yep.
So, the policy subcommittee met last week to start the discussion and make a recommendation for the AI policy. So, it was introduced as information. This is a discussion item only at this meeting, but it would require a vote in an upcoming meeting. So, the policy meeting, we had a good meeting, thoughtful conversation, but we have a good recommendation to bring it to the full committee. So, that's the policy subcommittee update, so we can scratch that later in the agenda. But sorry about the interruption.
Nope, that's okay. As we indicated at the last meeting, we do need to adopt a policy that was recommended by legal and by the Mass Association of School Committees. As a result, we examined a number of policies. And when I say we, it was Ryan Blanchard, Teri Fleming, and myself, looked at some other policies that have been adopted by local communities, and then created a draft of a policy that we noted with you here at our last school committee meeting. That draft policy was reviewed at school councils across the district. It was reviewed at roundtables at the high school, FLMS, and Grace. We collected feedback, both orally and via a Google form, based on that draft, and then we made some adjustments based on the input. And then, we took that policy to subcommittee for review, as Vice Chair Sova pointed out. In summary, the policy that you have before you, it contains an opening that gives an overall definition of AI or artificial intelligence, and notes that it's a transformative educational resource, but certainly one we'd like to get a handle on our students using. The policy provides essential definitions, both for students, families, and staff. It outlines acceptable use for students, which if I had to really summarize that, it indicates that students are using AI under the direction of the staff in the buildings. And then, it also outlines teacher and staff use and communication about their expectations for use to the students. And then, the policy concludes with a statement that specifies that the policy will be reviewed and revisited, because as we all know, AI and everything associated with it is changing as we sit here and as we speak. Ryan Blanchard is here this evening. If you had any questions for him specifically. Teri Fleming was integral in this policy as well. If you have any questions, we didn't entertain them certainly now.
Questions, comments? We did have a good conversation in the policy subcommittee about student education and staff professional development around this topic, which is included as part of the policy changes.
It would certainly support the policy. We've had conversations as recently as a few days ago, Ryan and myself, about some potential professional development for the staff, and certainly working with our staff so that they can help us to educate our students in support of the policy, and in support of their good use of AI.
At which age this will be introduced, the AI?
So, the policy covers the whole district. There's no intention right now to introduce AI used discreetly in lessons, I would say, below the fourth grade. Teri Fleming could probably speak to that more. We do have our digital literacy teachers across the district speaking about it. And just before I turn it over to Teri, I will say our young students are using AI. You know, they, they use it. It's ubiquitous, right? So, they're using it outside of school. So, it's kind of, it's something that is a potential to be in our K through pre-K to three classrooms before we know it. But I'll turn things over to Teri, who will answer that.
Yeah. Dr. Starkey addressed some of the components of it. In the digital literacy standards and the computer science standards, there are standards that address students understanding how to use the internet and the search engines and finding appropriate resources and vetting those resources as responsible citizens of digital literacy. And so, some of those conversations at elementary ages sounds more like when you search for something, you know, what are those, what are the things that are popping up, and how can you decide which ones are good? So, and those conversations, I had a conversation with third graders at AES the other day, and I said, you know, the, you know, do you know what those little links symbols are? And I'm like, no. And I said, look to the right. And it's just educating them about what they're looking at and how to understand those resources at the younger ages. But AI is a part of their daily lives, and they use it. And so, we need to make sure that they're secure in understanding how to log off and how to secure their information, and not just put their information out there because those digital footprints, digital footprints are talked about in grade two. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion?
I think it was the intention of the policy subcommittee to have a discussion at that, this meeting, and then a recommendation moving this as an agenda item at an upcoming meeting, which I believe at this point is in August.
August 20.
Any objections to that? Hearing none. So, that'll be an agenda item for the August meeting.
Thank you. Moving right along, just a quick transportation update for you regarding busing, and that ties into the next thing, which is our start and end times for school. As you know, we've been monitoring the situation in particular with our elementary students getting home very late in the afternoon. We've talked to you about meetings we've had regarding that transportation with Kenny Rizendi's and first student and our principals. We've continued with daily communication to the best of our ability with parents and caregivers. We let you know, we did have some bus evacuation drills. Railroad safety protocols have been rehearsed with students. Moving along, our next steps, we did, in fact, create an ARHS ridership survey, which we talked to you about. We did run some trial bus routes, which we talked to you about at the last meeting. And then, we are sitting here today announcing our product, which will be new adjusted start and end times to the school day. At the last meeting, we talked about some of the considerations that we made when we were thinking about start and end times. I won't go over those, given the length of this meeting right now. They have been presented to you at the last meeting and are there in your packet for review. We did examine the results of that ridership survey so that we could see which students, in particular here at Ponquid, would be taking the bus yet next year or not. We do need to provide a seat on the bus for every student. However, we do know that students sometimes don't ride the bus. So, that helped us to develop or anticipate some new routes, right? And it provided, we were able to provide those details for our student. They were able to then look at our tiered busing, and they were able to run five model and simulations of different bus routes in different start times at the schools that would lead us to an end time that would get the buses to the elementary schools in time to get our students home, certainly much earlier than they are now. Those results led us to do some consolidating of routes. We've got the bus, we've got it now so that we believe the bus will be arrived, buses will be arriving to Grace earlier. We've added two buses to a tier two. We have not added buses to our routes. We have reconfigured so that two of our buses are tier two buses now. And we are in the process of generating a letter to the community that will share the information that's on the next slide. And that is our new start times for the school year next year. We believe in moving the high school start time back to our pre-COVID, pre-COVID bus, pre-COVID start time of 7:15 AM, moving our FLMS start time to 7:20 AM, having our Grace start time at 8:20, our AES start time at 9:20, and our FES start time at 9:20. Those are all student start times, would lead us to the following end times and bring us to a situation where our elementary student buses are waiting for them at the doors of the school at dismissal at the end of the day. Those end times, the high school, 1:48, FLMS, 1:40, Grace, 2:35 PM, AES, 3:30, and FES, 3:30. And if you're following along the slides behind me, you can see the time difference in the last column. So, there's a significant time savings during the day with those bus runs, where we capture what feels to be around 50 minutes. And capturing that time will afford the opportunity for our buses to be present at the elementary schools at their expected time and deliver our young students home at a time that's very reasonable. So, these will be our start times to school next year. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Higgins, who also worked on this, in case there's anything you wanted to add, Mr. Higgins.
I just want to clarify that the reference to tier two or tier three, this means the number of runs the buses make at the end of the day. So, a tier two would be the buses that are taking students from the high school, middle school run, coming back, going to Grace and picking up students and making the run just for Grace, not then going on to the elementaries. By doing that, it will, we currently have one bus on tier two. With this adjustment, we would have three buses on tier two, which would, again, through consolidation of some routes and some extension of times, we'd be able to set it up, as Dr. Starkey said, so that buses are pulling in just before arrival and waiting for the students so that they can be dismissed at dismissal time.
Any discussion, questions?
I just have a couple of comments. Was there a bus monitor at some point this week? There was somebody on the bus this week. My husband asked me if it was a bus monitor, because I wasn't home. So, I just got a text message, and he says, oh, we have monitors now on the bus. I said, I have no idea what you're talking about. And I meant to send an email, and I completely forgot about it.
I'm unaware of a circumstance that would have, would have necessitated a bus monitor on a, on one of our yellow buses. I can follow up with you on that?
Okay. I was just curious. I mean, it could have been a new bus driver, you know, following for the route. I don't know. He asked me, and I was like, oh, I'll look into it. And I completely forgot. But I've seen some interesting things in my travels, working from home. I've seen buses switch students over at Martha and Mary Church of like students getting on and off two different buses. That I did not understand at all. That concerned me, because I wasn't sure what was going on, and I was just like driving by. And I said, oh, is it getting on and off one bus and getting on the other? I don't get that, but...
I'm unaware of a circumstance in which that would have happened on one of our buses.
I've seen it happen twice. And concerning to me as a parent, just like driving by going, what the heck is going on over here? Like, watching kids get on and off different buses, it was concerning.
I can tell you that, at first blush, hearing it, that would certainly be concerning to me as well. It's something that we are unaware of and that I will promptly look into.
Yeah. If any other situational stuff, I would, I mean, perhaps you could have a phone call offline. Any other...
Or certainly send an email.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, this week, I was just consumed and busy.
To be honest, I'd prefer to be alerted. To be honest, I'd prefer to be alerted to it when it occurs, because if this is happening, we'd certainly like to look into it and ensure the safety of our students on the bus. I thank you for bringing it to my attention this evening, but I would implore you to please reach out to me the second you see something like that happen, so that we can find out what's going on.
Yeah, and that goes for any issue. I appreciate that, and you stating that, because in real time makes sense. So...
Yeah.
Any comments or questions around student stock?
What was the elementary release time?
Elementary release time at Grace, 2:35, at AES, 3:30, and at FES, 3:30.
And in the wintertime would that necessitate children getting home in the dark?
I'm not sure exactly what time it gets dark, but it would be, it's likely. There's going to be a certain point in the year when that's likely to happen.
Further discussion? Comments, questions? Hearing none. Moving on to...
We'll move right along. I have one last update from you. If you recall at the last school committee meeting, I apprised you that the Acushnet Public Schools is reevaluating its tuition agreement regarding high school selection. Given the timeliness of this opportunity, I did communicate back then with Chair Blom and Vice Chair Sova, who had approved my sending an inquiry to Dr. Paula Bailey, the superintendent of Acushnet Public Schools. In turn, that email afforded Dr. Bailey the opportunity to ask Acushnet School Committee if they would consider sending us information about what they're looking for in a presentation and a proposal. So, it was an inquiry. I'm pleased to report that we have been invited to give a presentation and present a proposal at an August school committee meeting in the town of Acushnet. And we've been asked to address the following areas. They're listed there for you: academic offerings, student experience, support services, equity and diversity, school performance and environment, what makes ARHS stand out, family and community engagement, and fiscal responsibility. And as I said to you last time, I think our outstanding programming, academic, social, and athletic programming at the high school would provide opportunities almost unparalleled for our students, for the students in Acushnet. And this could also be a potential revenue stream for our district. So, I'm suggesting this evening that Ponquid High School pursue this and make a presentation... So I'm suggesting this evening that Aponequod High School pursue this and make a presentation and make a proposal at the August school committee member, meeting for Acushnet, I'm sorry, tongue tied, for Acushnet. I do have a concern, however. We don't want to make a public presentation regarding our proposal in advance of anyone else making their proposal to Acushnet. So what I'm looking for this evening is perhaps continuing support from Chair Blum and Vice Chair Sylvia as the two members who would represent the school committee as we develop and prepare and get this proposal ready to go before Acushnet. So you have two members of your school committee who would serve to endorse the plan so it can be presented to Acushnet without a public presentation in advance of presenting it in Acushnet.
As the Vice Chair, I have no objections to accepting, I guess, that responsibility. I would leave that for discussion with members for comment.
I have no problem with that. That makes sense to me. Chair and Vice Chair, those are representative from each town.
I think there's probably precedent for that. It doesn't seem to fit in a subcommittee, but I think that makes sense to me. Comments? Proceed.
Thank you. All right, moving along with our agenda this evening, we have our teaching and learning report from Terry Fleming. Oh, we did, I'm sorry. Interim Superintendent's Entry Plan Update. I won't go through the whole thing with you, but I will tell you that I've made it into 96 separate classrooms in the district. I'm very proud of that number, and I'm incredibly grateful to the teachers in the buildings who've been welcoming me into their classrooms. It's a complete of FES, a complete of AES, almost all of Grace, and I'm happy to share with you at the end of this week, I'm going to be spending some quality time over at FLMS. So thank you to everybody who's invited me in. It's been wonderful to be around the students. Over to you, Terry. Thank you.
I just want to compliment Dr. Stargi for getting into all those classrooms. She rushed over that, but it has been an amazing and very crazy schedule for her and such a commitment from the staff and from her own time to get into those buildings. My compliments. Okay, first thing I'm going to talk about, and I'm going to talk in fast forward, so hopefully our ears are listening and fast forward. In the, about third way through the year, Pam De La Rocco at our middle school started to do some cleaning in an effort to expand the effective use of the middle school library and possibly in sight of her retirement, and has weeded out books using a process called the CREW, which is Continuous Review Evaluation and Weeding Method. This method is approved and used at both the high school and the intermediate school as well. What it has done is makes three categories to determine if a book should remain on the library shelves: poor condition, poor content, and infrequent circulation. Any book that has received a prestigious book award, such as the Caldecott, John Newberry Medal, Coretta Scott King Pulitzer Prize, National Book Critics Circle, or independent publisher's book, was not removed and was left in the collection. This process has not been done for, this complete process has not been done for quite some time at the middle school, although they have done weeding in spurts. This is the first full weeding process that has occurred in recent years. So tonight, we are asking for a proper disposal of the books that were weeded out, and that is a total of 3,476 books. That is a really large number, so I do want to say that 799 of them were in very poor condition: worn out, dirty, warped, bug-infested, marked up, torn pages, et cetera. 369 had poor content, which were outdated, inaccurate, or false information, unused sets of books, repetitious series, superseded editions, not on our standards list for novels, biased or sexist terminology or views, and unneeded duplicates. And then infrequent circulation, there was over 2,000 books that had not been circulated for five to 10 years. They had not been checked out by students for five to 10 years. That being said, that's a lot of books. However, we are using our summer program for ESY and Jump Start and offering up books to the students, so they, those books will be out for students and families to take home and give new homes to. As well, our middle school art teachers are very excited because they have done some amazing artwork with books, worn books, and using them for different art projects. So they are happy to use many of those books for future art projects. So they are going to be out of the space of the library, but hopefully in good homes and being repurposed. So that vote is, we're requesting approval of disposal of those books using a proper book disposal procedure or by use as defined by our policy library, IJLA Library Resources pages 30 to 31 of our policy.
Hearing none.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no question.
Our middle school and high school was invited back to the regional civic showcase. This is the second year we participated both years. This year, we were able to send three teams from the high school and six teams from the middle school. As you heard from students and staff, our civics projects are strong and model, and modeled for districts across the Commonwealth. Students shared real-world action, they're taking on community issues, they shared their projects with peers and advisors, and there was many states and representatives at the showcase. And here's some examples: Sam Kingman and Ellie Mills with School Lunches, and then Hate Speech by Delaney Hudson. Those are middle school projects that went. Ocean Pollution by Olivia Martin, Corinne Mello, Lila Herrera, Ariana Vlahopoulos, and I did not get that right, okay, and Kaylee Vlahopoulos. Sidewalk and Safe Streets by Spencer Federich, Jace Jarvis, Aiden Pecorella, Sabrina Plouffe, and Maggie Solomon. And then our third set of middle school is fighting animal testing. Ashley Bogdan, Emma Decker, Emma Holland, and Frankie Manini Metavir. And Clean Water in Schools by Gabby Acusina, Zoe Anderson, Ali La Mostro, and Lila Lord. The high school civic showcase, Special Ed Inclusion at FLMS by Charlotte De Roche, Rachel Fernandez, Samantha Lambert, and Claire Lucy. And then Level Up Lakers by Cecilia Levert, Molly McHarthy, Amelia Mendez, and Grace Schwartz. And then Cast Away Your Worries, But Know Your Assamptit Rights by Luke Combs, Evan Dupras, Sean Lundgren, and Erin Prokasini. Chini, sorry, not. So I'm thrilled to say that they participated in that. They had a good time. Commendations have not been made. On the civic front, I also want to point out that we had three of our students, Corinne, Leiani, and Evan, spent the day at the Freetown Historical Society, and we had a very warm thank you letter from Leon Kedworth for their time and their professionalism showing and our elementary students around for the day. And then we also, under the same civics heading, we just have a lot of kids that are very involved. Dominic Lombardi, Amon Hardy, Jacob Bessie, Paul George, and Cameron Miller from the middle school created a local elections crisis flyer that was in the, in the Nemaska Weekly. And they put that out to encourage people to get out and vote and be participants in elections. So I am so happy to say that our staff are really encouraging and building that civic duty in our students, and students are responding, as you heard, tonight. This is a year-end title, year-end grant review. So these are the title grants, both federal and state and private grants that we have been awarded this year, and the two at the bottom, Project Lead the Way and Innovative Career Pathways, Career Connected Pathways, have been spoke about by Principal Dessert, and those are up for vote for acceptance tonight. So we have, we've done well. We have a total of $536,810 in grant funding this year. We do have concerns about federal grant funding for next year, but that update will come in August.
Bravo. Thank you for that. Chair recognizes Mr. Clark.
How many, how many of those are competitive grants?
So, six of them.
Good job.
And we still did not qualify for some of the competitive grants that were out this year, but I do continue. Two of these are private grants, so I am happy to say that we have expanded outside of what is provided through Dessie, and several, so two of them are provided through companies.
Apologies, Terry. You were saying six. I was saying four at the same time. You're correct, it's six.
Oh, good.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
On competing and acquiring those six grants.
The four are entitlement. You were right on four being the entitlement.
I was on the bottom.
Any questions for Ms. Fleming on teaching and learning report? Comments? Just a quick comment from me. It was nice to see a civics project highlighted at the senior awards night as well. It was a nice touch. Our students are certainly involved. Mr. Higgins, moving on to you, budget and facilities.
Yeah, if I could, would you flip one ahead, please? I just want to address, again, as we spoke, Joanne Conoyer, who after over 20 years of service for the district will be retiring at the end of June, and we will be very happy and very lucky to have hired as her replacement Melissa Navega. Ms. Navega is a parent in the district and has been for the past two years the guidance secretary at the middle school. So we're very excited about her coming up. She's already started training to take over for Joanne, and we're looking forward to that. As I mentioned to you before, we had, in addition to that, Lisa Craig will be joining us as our payroll specialist. So there's been some new faces, starting in July, in the business office. We're quite excited about that. Can you go back?
Before Mr. Higgins starts, I did not get to tell them what this is.
Sorry, I've already started. Too late.
Well, they're voting on it, so you're voting blindly on two rounds.
All right. So you're, you have in front of you the information regarding expenditures and revenue to date. We are tracking them, and they are aligning with our expectations. Per the school committee's request at the May 21st meeting, I'm reviewing the cost estimate of the engineering study, which you have in your packet from Habib and Associates, our house doctors. From the estimate, you'll see that the base study fee is $12,000 with reimbursable expenses of $3,335. As I have said in previous meetings, we are expecting to cover this funding through money to, from the state senate through an earmark as a result of additional monies that was identified in the millionaire's tax. However, the timing of that funding is flexible, and by flexible, I mean could be delayed. That delay would, of course, delay the opportunity for us to get started on this, on this study. So at the May 21st meeting, the committee discussed the prospect of utilizing E and D funding to initiate the study in a more timely manner, though, as we, as I said, the funding would, at the end of the day, would come from the state money that we would just not be able to, we can't start until we have the money set aside. So that was the reason why the suggestion was brought to the meeting last time, May 21st. For this to occur, the committee would need to vote to utilize the amount of $15,335 from E and D for operating expenses in the FY '26 budget. In addition to that, the FES PTO would like to donate several pieces of playground equipment, including two zigzag balance beams, a school bus jungle gym, and a large shade structure. The donation would include the equipment, which they've already purchased, and then the cost of, at the cost of $16,700, that approximate number, and then as well as the installation costs. We will, the installation, we have lined up, ready to go as soon as this vote to approve the donation, and we'll be, hopefully be able to get that, all that equipment installed this summer. Finally, you'll also notice that the, there's just an update on our FY '25 state appropriations. We are, the conferences, they are in conference committee now discussing the numbers, the most recent numbers you identify, I've shared with you on the cherry sheet estimates relative to Chapter 70, Charter of Tuition Reimbursements in Regional Transportation. Those we follow very closely throughout the process, starting in January, and our expectations is that they will finish in conference within the next two or three weeks.
Questions, comments, or discussion? Chair recognizes Ms. Brightman first.
So, starting with the Habib and Associates' proposal, when would this happen? Would this happen over the summer, like, when Kids Cafe is in session?
So it wouldn't affect Kids Cafe, because the Kids Cafe is not utilizing the pools.
Right.
So they'd be able to get in there. I don't know, because we would have, until we have the money lined up, they can't give us their schedule.
Do we know how long it takes to do this?
I don't have it. But I will share, I get that information and share it out with you.
Okay.
Chair recognizes, oh, sorry, Ms. Brightman. Continue. Sorry.
No, I will give the floor to Mr. Clark.
I make a motion to take that funds from E and D to do this, to do this study. It's dragging on, it's ridiculous. I make a motion to take the figure that you quoted out of E and D to do the study on the pool.
So there is now a motion on the table. That is already listed as a vote further down in the agenda. We have the option to do all the votes at the end, but you broke up an interesting point on that timeline. Given the monies coming in, are there any other projects that you may recommend that we could complete or need to be expedited for, before the start of the '25, '26 school year that would be covered by, or the monies would be replaced by the money from the legislature?
So the earmark is specifically designated for improving and repairing equipment and facilities for the athletic department on the campus. So this would include things on the, in the stadium, the pool, track, and so forth. We have on that, with that in mind, we have several projects that we are, we have lined up or in our planning stages. One is to remove the goalposts that are currently in the, on the stadium, which actually currently limit the length of the field. The field is not a full length of a field for sports like lacrosse and field hockey because of the way that the structure of those goalposts. The goalposts are with installation, purchase installation, would be $25,000. However, we have $5,000 in donation remaining from the boosters and from the anonymous donation that we received last year. Those monies were used for improved equipment in the weight room in our training facility, and then also for the new scoreboard, which has been installed over this past school year. So there's still $5,000 remaining in that donation, so that would obviously reduce the need for the goalposts, which could be installed over the summer. I can't promise that installation over the summer, but it is something that could occur in the short term. The other project is a larger project, and that would be the renovation of the long jump and triple jump and pits, pits and runways for the track. That's a longer-term project, something that would likely take into the, into the school year. So in terms of summer, the goalpost would be something that, a good possibility that it could be completed in the summertime.
I mean, it's something I'd be willing to entertain, but defer to the full committee. If we're trying to expedite stuff, especially the pool study, and we have the ability to do this, given it's going to be replenished and impact the fall seasons, it may be worth a further conversation.
I agree.
Thoughts, comments on that? You have something?
I just will share with you, if that was the case, as I mentioned before, the vote would be $15,335 for E and D for the pool. If you were to vote for the, the project for the new goalposts, that would be $20,000 in addition to that. So the total vote for E and D would be $35,335. However, as we've stated, that money would then be replenished through the earmark.
So it's like a loan?
Yes, it's like a, yes, that's a good way of putting it.
So just so I have the mechanics clear, we vote for the, to loan the E and D for this?
Correct.
And then once the earmark comes through and we get our money, the money goes back into E and D, so the net result is that it's zero spending out of E and D.
It would be zero spending out of E and D, yes.
No impact on the budget, zero spending out of E and D. It's just to expedite the timeline to potentially...
Right. Yep.
Ms. Amory?
To clarify, this would, this would add, we're going to also receive back that $15,000 from the state?
Yes, yes. The expectation is there'd be a larger number than that that would cover the number of these projects. We just don't have a time, exact timeline. We just don't have a time, exact timeline as to the start, when that money would be received.
Thank you.
So moved.
So, the motion, if I'm correct, the motion that Mr. Clark made was to remove the money from E and D for the pool. I think you'd have to, if you're looking to do both together, right, you'd have to remove that motion and start over with...
We'd have to amend the motion.
You could amend it as well?
So, we can do one of two things. We could take the motion off the table and deal with it as part of the, all the, all the votes at the end of the meeting, or we could, Mr. Clark could remove his motion, and then resubmit a motion and amend it for the two projects.
The $35,335.
Mr. Clark, I'll defer to you.
Ms. Emery?
I would just make a suggestion, although maybe the same, if we withdraw now and then make one motion at the end for the full $35,000 and change.
Great, I think just point of clarification, we would still be amending the language on the agenda?
Yes.
And adding, changing from 15 to 35?
$35,000.
$35,000.
Can I just ask, maybe this is a procedural question, but the agenda very clearly states Gray's Pool Engineering Study, and doesn't mention anything about goalposts and voting on other topics. So are we going to run into an issue that it wasn't clearly specified on the agenda? And this is a spending, potentially a spending item? I'm with you in, you know, in the thought process behind it, in proceeding in that way, I'm just sort of, the mechanics of it, I don't know.
I think we should approve the pool tonight, and for the next meeting, deal with the other part.
My concern is the next meeting's in August, and then we're losing all that time in the summer when we could be working on it. But I also don't, I don't want to file of...
I don't think it's necessarily an open meeting law violation, no, that's the question, no.
I think...
It would just, we would just need to amend what we're stating.
Yes, thank you, Miss Singh. I think the essence of item H is the transfer of funds from E and D. I think we do exercise, or we have the ability to amend the language to include.
Okay.
Because the, the essence is the transfer of funds.
I'm just being overly cautious.
No, it's, it's a good point, Ms. Brightman. We all agree on...
I can withdraw my motion and amend it with those amendments.
With the rest of, so motion withdrawn, we will then move to the full slate at the end of the meeting. Any further discussion on that item?
Not the Gray's Pool study, but I do have questions about the FES, the playground donation. Do we know what the cost is to install this?
This is coming through their, their, part of their donation.
Okay.
But the, the cost, until we, until I get the approval for the donation, I can't get the estimate from the company.
Okay, and is the install guaranteed?
Yes.
Do it for warranty?
Correct, yes. So that's why there had been some talk at the beginning, when PTO originally purchased it, they had, they had some thoughts about having our maintenance crew do the installations, but the problem with that is you don't get those guarantees. And so when you have a professional installer, you have the insurance that backs it up.
Okay, so we don't know the cost for the install yet, but that will be part of the donation?
Correct.
We don't have an amount for it.
Right, yes.
Hugh.
Any other comments, questions? So that concludes the budget and facilities section.
I'll be brief. So at September, using all of my mathematical abilities, I had projected that we would be at 581 students at the end of the year, that it would be involved in special education through IEPs, or qualifying with, with pending IEPs active. And currently, we are at 575. So I am right in that ballpark. We still have probably 12 eligibility meetings left for the school year, so we're very close to the number I projected back in September, which kind of sustains preparedness for budget and things like that. So I, you know, I'm happy with that projection. Overall, I won't go building by building, but we did have an increase over the year of 45 special education students, 44 in building, and one out of district student. And then we had move-ins, move-outs, which I have all of that included in the paperwork that you can see, I won't go over that. We did complete 340 evaluations this school year, from September to present, which include initials, reabals, and additional assessments, 239 504 plans, and then leaning into E S Y. We are having E S Y running July 7th through August 7th. We're pretty well-staffed for that. We're giving final caseloads to staff and having them get all their information in their rooms, and all of that stuff being ready, so we feel, we feel strong with E S Y going into July. And then just some other things to note, I think Gail Trink left, she was here, she was, she wanted to come up to talk about CPAC, but I think she had left a little while ago. They did have their officer voting, and so Gail and Amy Massa will continue to be co-chairs of CPAC, and then Melinda Hernandez will be the secretary, and treasurer will be Jessica Allerhead. So they have their new board set. I will set up a meeting for the summer to do some agenda setting, to do a meeting schedule setting, and then to also talk about some guest speakers and events, and work with them over the summer, so we can get a head start on that, and just talk about meetings. And we always want to increase participation, that's something I think we're always trying to work through. That's that. Right now, in this current moment, we are fully staffed in special education, knowing we're about to end the school year, but we've been fully staffed, which has been a good thing. Just one thing I want to bring up, we are due for our integrated monitoring review. They change the name through DESI like every three years, so now it's called Integrated Monitoring Review. It used to be called Tiered Focus Monitoring. So October 13th, I must submit every point that they want via their portal, which includes like teacher licensure, child find, a lot of things that we have to complete at a district level. That is something that we're going to work towards through our leadership meetings and our retreats in the summer with all of our district leadership, and then I'll be working on the submissions over the summer as well, I want to be well ahead of that. And they will be coming out, I believe, the week of December 8th, to come do our DESI site visit. So they're going to be doing visits across the district, they're going to be doing interviews, all of that. So it's our big review coming up in the fall and into December. And then, last, last couple of things, we had Keolis come out to do a special education van driver training on June 6th. They went over all of the things that have to do with kind of the increased trains coming through the district, and I talked with Kim Freitz, who is the administrator, or the overseer, rather, of transportation, and she said it actually, I couldn't be there, I had another meeting, but made sure it got set up, and she said it was great. She said that the drivers felt so much more comfortable, they were able to ask questions that they were unsure of, and they got really good, solid answers, so they felt much more comfortable when the training was over. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout out to some of the kiddos at FLMS. We did interviews for school nurse there, and they were part of a second round panel, and we had four students that participated. They asked extremely thoughtful questions. It was moderated by Principal Francisco, and I was running another part of the second interview, and then we came together at the end to debrief, and the thought process that those kids went through, it was, it was great. I think that they were helpful decision-makers, and they had even said, "This is hard, we want to pick all of them." And I said, "Now you know what it's like to be an administrator in the district going through interviews." So they were just wonderful, and put so much effort, and I would love to continue that process through the district as much as we can, having students be part of interview processes when it's, when it's appropriate. So I just wanted to give those kids a shout out, because they did a great job. So that's kind of the roundup for special ed this year, student services.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Steele? Hearing none. Moving on to subcommittee and district committee reports. Regional Finance Committee, any updates? No updates at this time. Interim Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, the, the committee met last week, and we mapped out a timeline. We look forward, and we're recommending the interim superintendent present goals at the August meeting. We will go through the, the formative process sometime in the fall, and then early spring, late winter, we will conclude with the summative process, all in public meetings. I think it was the recommendation of the committee to share all the DZ documents and rubrics with the full committee on an advanced timeline, but I, I think that the primary takeaway was it's a one-year process, and we look forward to hearing your goals, Dr. Superintendent, Dr. Starkey, in August, at the August meeting for approval.
Just a point of clarification about the timeline, you mentioned formative in the fall, and then you mentioned summative in the spring, with the understanding that I would be assigned my rating in March.
Yes, that's a great point, and, and I think we, we, we got some feedback on other budgetary items. I think doing this in March allows this committee, these eight members, to take part in the full process, and they make a formal recommendation on your final performance rating. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
So that was the recommendation. We'll meet, and then through that subcommittee, we will share through the chair, Ms. Blum, all the documents needed in advance for the meetings. Thank you for that. Wellness and Health Committee?
No report.
Policy Subcommittee, we took that out of order, and we spoke to that around the AI policy. Capital Committee?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, and the Pool Subcommittee?
We've established the members on the Pool Subcommittee. I am waiting on one response to see if the, the last member is still interested and available in joining, but she had expressed interest a couple months back. I'm going to follow up, I'd like to give her a couple more days to hear back, and then I'll follow up with the entire committee. We'll establish our initial meeting over at the pool at some point in the near term, and be able to go from, from that point to figure out next steps. We are, personally, I've spoken several times on this, we are including, obviously, Greg Goodwin, both swim coaches. Margaret French has expressed interest in, in it not being part of the committee necessarily, but, but we will be also meeting with the finance folks from each town.
Great.
As, not all of them are meeting either, these will be subsequent meetings.
Great, and hopefully we get some good news coming up.
Now that, now that that's been approved, we should be able to have a better idea.
And it certainly includes the community members that were at the podium.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you for that update. Any other discussion items that may be, may come before the committee?
I don't have a discussion item necessarily, but I just wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to the district PTOs. We're voting tonight to accept a donation from FES, but we've also accepted Promethean boards for AES, and we've accepted instruments at Gray's, and I know at FLMS, they've painted rooms and make our spaces, and they really contribute a lot to our district. So thank you to them for all they've done to make this a successful school year for the students.
Thank you, Ms. Brightman, I agree with you. Thank you to all the PTO boards, definitely a, a major part of the school community. Moving on to number seven, all these action items, it appears that most of them, a majority vote, with one of them requiring a roll call. So why don't we start with A. So I'm looking to entertain a motion to approve the SY '26 school handbooks. The approval of this may include any language that moves to align handbooks across the district.
So moved.
Salkin.
Do I have any discussion? No discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Action item B, looking for, entertain a motion to approve an update to the '25-'26 ARHS program of studies, this requires a majority vote.
All moved.
Second.
Second, do we have any discussion? No discussion, we already had that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstention? Motion carries. Action item C, we have a vote to approve an out-of-state field trip to Roger Williams, this requires a majority of vote. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Salkin.
Any discussion? All those in favor say?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Action item D, a vote to establish temporary subcommittee for tentative, cushion it, actually, I don't, we don't need, we can strike this, because I think we agreed to use the chair and the vice chair.
You did.
We did, so no need for any objections to that. Strike this from action items under Agenda 7. Now we are on E, vote to approve the F M L, FLMS book surplus, this is a majority vote. Like to entertain the motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Action item F, this is a vote, would like to entertain a motion to accept Project Lead the Way grant?
So moved.
Do we have a, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to action item G, entertain a motion to accept Innovation Career Pathways and Career Connections?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Brightman, thank you, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. I'm not a no. Any abstentions? No, motion carries. Action item H, so this is, like to seek, going to seek to entertain a motion, Mr. Clark, I'll, I'll give you the honor, this is transfer any E and D funds, but it's an amended amendment to the, to the language.
To include the goalposts.
So, the language would be, we are to transfer funds from E and D for the purposes of funding the Gray's Pool Engineering Study, and in addition to Athletic Fields Project, the goalpost, for a total of... $35,300.
$35,000.
$35,000. Any discussion? All those in favor?
This is a roll call.
Oh, this is a roll call, I'm sorry, Ms., please call the roll.
We're keeping Bob as the motion.
Ms. Dick Clark's motion, yes.
Do we know who seconded it? I didn't hear a second.
Second.
There you go, thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Courtney Brightman?
Yes.
Bob Clark?
Yes.
Carolina Hernandez?
Yes.
Russell Ng?
Yes.
Melinda Richards?
Yes.
Tim Emery?
Yes.
Moving, motion carries, thank you. Entertain a motion to accept the FES PTO playground donation of equipment and installation requires a majority vote.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favors, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. J, we have a vote, entertain a motion to approve payroll vendor warrants from 5/28/25, a majority vote.
So moved.
Salkin.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And finally, action item K, entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes from 5/21/25, this is a majority vote.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion carries.
So moved.
Thank you.